I'm surprised Doc hasn't texted me.
Have you?
Exactly.
You're right.
When I've gotten this done, once in awhile.
Yeah, sure.
Done here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright.
Say that again?
You can go ahead and get started.
Alright, let's call the meeting to order. Start by standing for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in justice for all.
Doc's calling me right now.
Okay.
Hi Doc. Hello? Mitch, what do you have for a meeting password? Yep, that's what I have too. Can you double check the email or is there something on the screen? Okay, we're double checking here, so just give us a second.
What I can do is invite him again?
Mitch is going to send you a link.
There are some spots in our bottoms where he's called.
I think he's going to send you an email with full link and you can just click on that.
Okay, we should be getting that.
Okay, yep, we should have gotten that now Doc.
I was waiting for Doc, but okay, Andy, take your call, please.
Bush?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Eisner?
Here.
Lindsay, I think will be here shortly. Stappas?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Alright, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I looked at them last week and I will make the motion to approve.
Hey, can I make a recommendation for a small amendment?
Yes.
The regular meeting minutes said, uh, let me, I'm gonna try to pull it up, but it said, uh, I don't know if you have it in front of you or if you can pull it up on the shared screen there, but, it said, just scroll down just a little bit there. Uh, member Dunn echoed the graduation sentiments and also wants statement regarding Floyd from district. I'd like that to be amended just to say want statement regarding racial equality from the district. If the board would be okay with that.
But you, you did mention that name though, correct? Just for the record?
Uh, I may have, I mean, that incident is what brought the issue into current events. But that was not my, my intent was not to make a statement about a specific person, but about the issue that the incident brought up. Does anyone have a, if anyone has a problem with the issue of racial equality, we could talk about that.
Can I ask why this is being brought up?
I'm just amending the minutes Everett.
Oh, okay. I see. I was behind you here, thanks.
We've got him, uh, there was a motion on the floor to approve the minutes and then Dr. Dunn wanted to amend that.
Do we have to do anything for the amendment or you just want that? It's just okay?
There was no second to Gary's motion.
I'd like to, I'd just like to request that Gary either change the motion or we could proceed.
Would the wording change?
Correct.
No, I'm not gonna do that. I know what was said at that meeting.
Aaron, are you, are you suggesting we remove the word Floyd and add racial diversity, equity, equality, sorry, equality?
That is what I'm suggesting, I, I'm not denying that I said the man's name during the meeting.
I guess my, my only issue is we have no history of any racial inequality in this school, so I don't know why it even has to be mentioned.
But, but I think in a time when, when there is definite unrest, not necessarily in our community, I think things, I haven't felt it a lot here, but in the, in the social atmosphere that we live in, there is a great deal of social unrest and that social injustice is a topic that we're hearing a lot about. That for us to make a statement, which we did reaffirming that this is who we are and this is who we always have been, is acceptable. And I think that while a specific instance really brought that into an, into national focus, I don't think that it's necessarily about, about George Floyd. It's about as a, as a nation, we're at a time where this is on people's radar and we're saying, we're proud of the approach we as a school have taken in the past and we're gonna continue on that path. And I, so I agree that the name, that George Floyd's name was mentioned in that meeting, but I think the intent was, let's address the issue as this is who we've always been and this is who we'll continue to be and we're proud of that. Is that not the direction, is that not other people's interpretation? Because I'm putting a lot of conjecture out there.
I don't have a problem adding, adding the words that Doc wants to put in there, but if Floyd was mentioned, I, I don't really see the problems with that either, Aaron.
Well, that's, that's fine, I mean, I, I just wanna clarify my request and I don't wanna belabor the meeting, so if, if there's strong, if there's strong issue with removing Floyd from the record, maybe we can make the amendment say wants a statement from the district regarding racial equality, given the recent events sparked by the incident involving George Floyd.
I'll, I'll make the motion on your first request, we just, uh, racial equality in the district. I'd be happy with that and we'll move on. Okay, would anybody like to second the motion?
I'll second the motion, alright.
Andrew, which color question, please?
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner? Yes. Lindsay?
Yes.
Stappas?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Uh, communications, board communications received. I do have a request to the board and, uh, this does involve, um, diversity, the campaign on diversity that we talked about at the last, the last couple of meetings and throughout, throughout our country. And it pertains to homecoming in the fall, which takes place, uh, we have this, this annual election of a homecoming court. The girls are, are subjected to somewhat of a ritual, have to get elected among their peers, by their peers, I should say, to be on homecoming court. Whereas the homecoming court is made up of males and I guess, the way, the way I, I understand it, as long as they're on a, you know, in a sporting event in the fall, they're automatically put on the homecoming court. And I don't think, I don't think it's right that girls have to be selected, elected by their peers to be on such a court, such an event, I should say, called the homecoming court. So I'm asking, I'm asking the board to conduct a review of that and see if, if somehow we can change that. All other homecoming activities, I think, are wonderful and I like to see the tradition continuing. Including possibly a homecoming court made up of maybe a different, a different set of students, possibly seniors. I mean, all senior girls could participate on homecoming court if all boys can be on it if they're in schools.
I think that's a really interesting perspective. When you call it polite, it does seem a little archaic that our boys are valued based on their athletic ability and our girls are based on their, so their value is based on their social popularity. So I feel like it's reasonable to say that it's either a democratic process for the entire, the entire student body, or that the, the same criteria apply. I would struggle to say if it's specific to sports or if it's specific to certain activities, do we have to worry about a, you know, that, that that sports are valued over other things, that other extracurriculars that people may engage in? So I would, I would lean towards a democratic process where a student body votes. Not that, not that I would wanna have to be the one in charge of polling and weeks thing student voting and campaigning, but it's an interesting point and one that when discussed in this context shines a light on the disparity between the two genders.
Well, to, and to add to that, thank you, and to add to that, uh, we always, in, in this school, it's always about preparing kids for the future and, and selecting our female students in that kind of environment. I'm not, I'm not sure if that is valuable to their futures.
I'd like to hope it's not.
Dr. Dunn?
I don't disagree with this suggestion, is there, Mitch, is there a way? I, I don't know what the next plan would be, would we request that the homecoming committee basically just look at the entire process in the light of maybe fairness and gender equality while at the same time preserving, you know, value, valued traditions?
I think that's a, a good direction for us to go. I know the homecoming committee is made up with student representation on there. We have a couple of advisors that oversee it, but, uh, there is a great deal of student input that goes into, to the homecoming festivities. I, I will share, oh boy, four or five years ago, I had a, our community member asked me why, um, other organizations, other groups, other clubs were not represented? Why is homecoming always in the fall and always around athletics? And I just took the homecoming court, males and females, and, and there were several of the females that are, were not athletes, but literally almost every club, organization, activity that we offer was represented on the homecoming court. And now our size makes that pretty easy to have, I, I could be a band kid, an FFA kid, I could be an honor student, I could be a cross-country athlete, I could be in the National Honor Society and in the play. Now I represent all six of those things as one individual on, on the court. So, um, we, we can certainly kick this to the homecoming committee and ask them to meet with, with students and try to put something, put something together. And I think that's the best direction you wanna have, in my opinion, you wanna have some student, student ownership into what we do next and, and get their input into it as well. So I, I certainly think that we can reach out to the homecoming committee and, and, and give them this task.
Mitch, when do they start meeting and when do you think would be an appropriate time for them to kind of report their findings to the board, just for, just to close the loop?
Well, uh, I hate to say this, but it all depends on what kinda fall sports we're gonna have. They would, they would start meeting here soon with, with football season being three weeks away, the, the start of football season being about three weeks away. They would, they would tend to meet here during the summer a few times. So, I would say probably the August board meeting, we might be able to get a, a response from them.
I personally, I believe that the students can certainly have, have a seat at the table in this discussion, but it's hard to remain fair and impartial from a student's perspective with such an important issue. And I think, uh, I think, uh, possibly a policy committee of the board could, could handle this along with student input.
I'm fairly certain, I read through the way it's set up in the high school handbook, that's where it's already written down. I don't know who put that together, but it's in the high school handbook, so there should be somebody that put that together.
That was a question of mine, Doc, thanks for bringing it up. Is that part of the handbook that we're gonna be?
It is, yeah, it's, it's, it's in the handbook, I read it.
It's in the, it's, it's in the athletic handbook.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was one of the ones I read here, yeah.
Yes. And that was, that was given to me by the homecoming advisors.
Are made up of who, Vicky?
Our homecoming advisors are Dan Burrisson and Kristen Staver.
I would suggest to move this thing along, uh, cause that's, it seems how you correctly identified as athletic handbook. I think this is a communication from the citizenry that we wait till we get to that athletic handbook, cause I knew it wasn't one of them, I couldn't remember which. And then we could say that needs to be revised. I mean, I'm just thinking about moving on for the interest of time.
Sounds good to me, Doc, is there any other board communications?
I will just, I received a communication from the board president on somebody that called the president over a comment that I made, and I just wanna say that if you're gonna call the president over a comment that I made, you better make sure you tell the president every single thing I said, not just something that you think is gonna make me look bad. And I'm pretty sure I know who did it, I'm looking at the camera right now, so if you got a problem with something I said, you can call me directly and talk to me, you don't have to go behind my back. That's all I wanna say.
I've, I've got some communications, I've had, um, some parents call, which is unusual, cause they're not even people I know. And I've heard different things expressed where one parent said they don't wish to send their kids to school. I'm just expressing what they said and that they were probably homeschool. Another one, um, felt that we should go to virtual learning. As you know, there's all kinds of options that you sent to us Mitch, but it was interesting for the first time in a long time, except for the elementary school, uh, situation, I've been receiving direct calls from parents. I just wanna comment, there's more interest in what we decide about going back to school here and what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I had probably six or seven between emails and, and the, the, I mean, to be, to be honest, the, the opinions are across the board. I mean, whatever we decide to do, we're gonna make about thirty percent of the people happy.
Yeah. I agree.
Of the, of the few teachers I've talked to, and I certainly haven't talked to all of them, but the few I've talked to, they all want to be back in this building. And I know, I know none of them were really enjoying that last spring and I, I'm sure, I can, I can imagine how painful that must have been for them.
It will be good discussion, I guess that's the next agenda item, isn't it?
All after citizen communications, along with board communications, same, you know, Doc, are you guys, I have full concerns on both ways of, every way of starting and everybody's information or input and opinion. So, uh, onto citizen communications, or is there any other board communications?
No.
No? Uh, on the citizen communications.
Doc may have one.
I just wanna just clarify that I did get several emails about the reopening, return to school plan that, uh, that I'll keep in mind as we have the discussion next on the agenda.
Alright, I would, I would ask, is Eric Porz online? Eric from Kramer's, Eric Porz, are you online? Are you in the meeting?
Did you push out an invite to him Mitch?
I did. I will, uh, not hearing Eric, I will apologize again, I invited Eric again to attend. He is the site superintendent for Kramer's. I spoke with him last Friday. He was going to send himself a calendar reminder to be here, I told him I would send him an invite at 6:30 to start the meeting. I sent the invite and unfortunately he, something must have come up where he is unable to join us at this time, so again, I apologize.
I, I would, I think we oughta make it mandatory at the next meeting, cause this is the second time. And I think these guys are getting paid enough money, they can show up and tell us what's going on. I, I'm a little disturbed by this, frankly. I, I just find it unacceptable Mitch.
Has there been any communication with the small committee?
That, uh, two, three weeks ago, we had that meeting?
Yes, with the, with the
With Tim and, and Kramer's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mitch Gilbertson, who basically stays in the office, kinda oversees the project as far as ordering materials, lining up the subs, making sure the schedule kinda stays up to date. Eric is the guy on site. So I went down to the trailer on the elementary school property and spoke to him in person on Friday. Asked about, uh, progress, you know, I said, the board, board's not looking for an hour presentation, you know, simply how are we doing? How do you feel things are going? At that time, he said, well, I feel like we're, we're on schedule where I thought or hoped we would be at this point in time. They were pouring a second section of, uh, subgrade wall supports and would be hoping, they were hoping to, as he called it, turn the corner, on the north side of the building, turn the corner, start heading south. And then at that point in time, that's when the wall panels would be put in and placed in. So I will certainly touch base and, uh, I'll go up above Eric and, and talk to either Mitch Gilbertson or Daryl Kramer attended the last, uh, building meeting, construction meeting. I'll just talk to Daryl Kramer and, and get this taken care of.
Dr. Dunn, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanna echo Everett's request that, uh, I think the board and the taxpaying public deserve regular updates on the status of this $12 million project.
Absolutely.
And at a minimum, we should have minutes of this core committee, you know, findings that at, at a minimum should be emailed to the board so that we know what you guys met about, what you guys talked about, what are the problems, how's it going, are we on a timeline? Were there any change orders? You know, all that, all that stuff, I think the board just needs as a courtesy, FYI, just to say, hey, this is what we've been meeting about.
Mitch has some notes he'll, he'll send out tomorrow.
Yeah, I've got all
But the, the meeting was how many weeks ago?
Two, two or?
Two weeks?
Two weeks, I don't remember.
Okay. Okay, well, can we just make it a routine that the board is, is kept informed in between meetings of the core committee? Or if, or someone wants to make a presentation of the core committee, you know, findings at the regular board meeting, I suppose that would be okay too, but I think the more we're informed in real time, the better.
Yeah, that's, that's, go ahead, Andy. You know, maybe for them by Friday or at the end of business Friday, maybe sending you an email update, uh, so we're not waiting a month to hear from them. I would hate to get, I would hate to get our first numbers update three months into the project.
I think that's a pretty honest request.
Yeah, I, I, I'm embarrassed because people will even call me and say, how's it going with the elementary school? And I'll say, we've had no reports and I have no idea, and that's not good.
Cause I drive by a couple times a day and there's exciting things going on.
I, I drive there too, I can't really tell what's going on, Andy, I'm glad you can.
Where we're at and, and financially where we're at, you know, I would hate to be three months in and already have a unexpected expense. And just something for the board to consider that, that driveway parking lot is not gonna be usable in their time.
No. We figured, we figured that.
After the, the truck went through Friday, there's a huge torn entryway, so just something for us to keep on our radar when we're done.
I think we actually did talk a little bit about that last fall, I remember, right? I will reach out, I will reach out to Mitch Gilbertson, uh, who's the next guy up the ladder tomorrow.
I wanna ask how they're paid, are they submitting bills monthly or how are they paid?
Basically, that's how they're coming in right now, Doctor. We had agreed that they, you know, it was, uh, every other week, but the subs send everything to Kramer's, Kramer's sends a copy to myself and to HSR. They do not get paid until HSR signs off on the submittal as well, and then they're paid through Marsha.
You know, I, I think we have a good relationship with Tim, he'd be another person to reach out and say, put some leverage on these guys to give us reports, you know?
I think you're right there, Doc, I think we reach out to Tim and let him take care of that request for us.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to say anything? No? Hello, hello, okay. Items for information, discussion, would be the plan for reopening in the fall?
This is the, this is non-action, correct?
This is non-action, just for discussion.
Okay, so, um, I had shared with the board, um, the elementary plan, that's probably been modified at least once since that time, and I'd shared with you the middle school, high school plan as well. And what we're really looking for is, had asked administration to reach out to a handful of families, they have shared this plan with this, with their respective staff and gotten feedback from their respective staff. And I'd asked them to reach out to some families prior to tonight's meeting. Our, my hope is that you give us some direction now. We, we've been taking information in from Iowa County Health Department, the DPI and Wisconsin Department of Health Services in the education forward document that they put together. We met with, uh, Dr. Fox and Dr. Dunn. Andy sat in on that meeting as well with administration, kinda looking at what are we missing, what things need to take place? What else should we roll in? What is some of the more recent, up-to-date information? And, you know, as, as some people have alluded to already, I took a, a phone call from, or from a parent who's going to have a kindergarten and the, the main point of that individual's position was if Minute Point will allow a virtual option, my child is going to attend school in Minute Point through that virtual option. If not, I'm going to put my child in the Wisconsin Virtual School because they believe that their child will, will be successful virtually. They're not comfortable sending their child back into our building with every student in. So I mean, I, I've heard it all, I've heard, you know, we should be, we should be here every day, all day. I would go on record stating that I do not believe, as Gary mentioned, that there is not one employee that doesn't want every student in the building every day of the week, starting August 24th. But based on the best information we have available to us, we're putting together what we, what we would call a hybrid model. Some face-to-face and some virtual learning. Mr. Renwick, are you online?
Yep, I'm here.
Would you care to kind of explain, I have Would you care to kind of explain, I have the model up on the screen. Would you care to kind of explain the, the elementary cohort model?
Sure. So, a little complicated, but we're splitting the kids up into basically two big cohorts. A, B would come on, and this is grades one through five, would come on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then cohort C and D would come on Thursdays and Fridays in the building. When they're not in school, then they would be learning virtually. Whether that's two days, three days, it's yet to be decided, but as Mitch said, it would be a hybrid model. So some in-person, some virtual. Class sizes would be around 10 kids per class is what we anticipate. Some of the similar feedback I, I'm getting from parents is some families who planned it just to completely virtual. So that would be the other piece of this too is along with having a blended model, we would also look to have just a completely virtual option for some families who for a variety of reasons would not want their children in the building. Grades K and PK would come half-days every day except Wednesdays. We just felt it was important to have the youngest ones in the building as much as we can. And Wednesdays would be designated just as a deep clean day. And there would be a potential to bring in certain individual, certain kids, for example, an intense academic intervention to have them come in. It would be one-on-one. We're not sure what that looks like yet. And yeah, that's essentially the plan right now. And that's, this was developed when, I don't know what the case count was in the county, but it was developed at that time. I'm not sure exactly what the numbers are now, but.
I think when we started, the case count was somewhere in the twenties and the most recent one I saw was 45 for Iowa.
Okay, it's doubled. Okay, so you know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a changing circumstance, which makes it tough, so.
And, and as I said, this plan has, has morphed a little bit from its original inception. I will bring up kind of the middle school, high school plan, and I would let Mr. Austin or Ms. Dahl speak to that.
Yeah, uh, middle school, high school plan is kind of similar. We would be bringing different grade levels in each day. So it's a little bit different that way. And that's mainly because of the combination of teachers that we have, you know, we have teachers at the high school level that teach freshmen and sophomores, and then freshmen and juniors, and depending on what that level is, so it's easier. We're going to bring bigger groups in to bring them in by grade level. Uh, and then we'll, they'll basically be in smaller groups. They'd be in groups of eight to 10, depending on what the electives they selected are. And then they'll rotate through those groups throughout the day. Again, part of that is just keeping that group number smaller and allowing students to rotate through with the possibility, you know, expanding as we understand more about this too. Middle school would be similar, and I'm sure Vicki could talk about that as well, but similar sort of thing. It'd be bringing a grade level in each day. The sixth grade would come in twice a week, similar to what fifth graders or anything younger would do as well. Um, and that's so they can get all their classes in because they only have three teachers that teach their core classes.
And we feel, well, we felt too, it's important since sixth graders are going to be new to the middle, high school building that they do come twice a week.
Actually, that's four days. Don't you mean Vicki that they are there four days, the six?
Well, the, the sixth graders would be there two times a week.
Two times a week.
Then the seventh, eighth graders would be each there a day during that.
Right.
Oh, I see.
We would have a grade level per building level. So it'd be a grade level at the middle, middle school and a grade level at the high school each day.
Angie Kleiner?
Yes, I am.
Would, would you speak to some of the, some of the questions and concerns and, or program delivery that, that you and we've been working through as well?
Yeah, so I've only talked a little bit to the staff because a lot of our scheduling is going to be dependent upon what we move forward with for all the other students. So some of the support services through not only special education, but title services are really dependent upon what the rest of the school, how the rest of the school runs. But we've talked about obviously trying to maximize our time with the students, potentially using that Wednesday of the deep clean day to make additional one-to-one contacts for our students. And, and provide another point of contact, especially at the middle school, high school level, when they need a lot of the guided study halls for reteaching and organization. We potentially might have the discussion of providing some of our services in the home, especially our related services like occupational therapy or physical therapy and do some homebound-based instruction. But the specifics, we haven't really gotten into because I needed to see how, you know, how all of this played out so that I knew, you know, potentially who was coming on what days. And, but, but I've been in contact with multiple families. They're supportive of the idea of we're trying to keep students safe first and foremost, and then working with the families to make sure we can help meet their needs and provide those supplemental services that they need.
So, I'll go first. I disagree with this plan. We need to get these kids back in this building and in your building, Matt. The last three months of the 1920 school year. I would rate that as 10% at best. So there is a risk bringing kids back, but I feel there is a bigger risk by our administration not wanting to bring kids back in. We can achieve this. First thing we need to do is you gotta get parent input. These are the, these are their kids. They know what's best for their kids. Mitch, you don't know what's best for everybody's kids. You send out a survey ASAP, you get it put together tonight, a couple of simple questions. Do you want your kids to go to school? Or do you want to keep your kids home for virtual learning? Then you will find out the percent of kids that want to come back into school. And then you manage that number. If that number is 350, we have plenty of room in these two buildings to make that happen. Number one, get that survey out. Two days to complete it. Get it back Thursday at noon. This board will meet Thursday night. We need to kind of get this going. People want to know. Parents want to know. When we get that survey back, then, then you have better information. All the emails that I've got, and I have gotten plenty, the most, the most emails on any subject, anything that this board has talked about have came in the last three or four days. They all are requesting that the courses be recorded. Cameras in classrooms are going to be the answer to this problem, I feel. Every room has a camera, including the library, including your room Mitch. If a child is suspected of of not feeling well, the COVID virus, they can stay home for two weeks, whatever the case may be. We're going to have that. You know that's going to happen. They can join in then through record it with video to interact with the teacher, to interact with the kids in the classroom. And that is going to be so valuable to pick out where we left off in March. We're already behind, we're three months behind. We have employees, including yourself Mitch. You can help, Matt can help, Angela can help, Matt Austin can help. If we've got to separate kids, th- this is what it's going to take. We're all going to have to roll up our sleeves to get this thing to work. Keeping our kids home 70% of the time, virtual learning like we had the last three months of last year is going to be a disaster. You're not picking up the kids at all. A complete disaster. And I'll let other board members talk.
So, so I had a couple of dots around this. First of all, when I think about the blended model, I'm asking the question, who is this best serving? And I'm not sure it's best for the students, and I'm not sure it's best for the teachers, and I'm not sure it's best for families or parents. And when I think about parents who have students, or I'm sorry, teachers who have students, and I think about them trying to manage this, my heart aches for them because I know what it was like for me to have a job that I could kind of put on, you know, maybe not dedicate as much time to so that I could help along with some of this stuff at home. And they don't have the luxury because they're putting a hundred, they're, they're having to put even more in if, if we ask them to teach virtually and in the schools at the same time.
And Julie, it's not only, it's not only, it's his parents that work and they're going to get home at 5 o'clock. And the kids are going to be so lost with this virtual learning.
Yep. Sorry. Another thing that crosses my mind is I, I don't think that things that happened at the end of, after, after March 16th or starting March 16th were necessarily a bust. But any success that we had through that, I believe was strongly based on the fact that those students already had a bond with those teachers. They understood expectations. They, they, the teacher knew the student, the student knew the teacher. It worked. We're talking at the beginning of a new school year with new teachers and new student relationships that need to be built. And I think that there's a really good chance that by Thanksgiving, we could be in a complete shutdown situation again. So if there's a way we can get students in classrooms early in the year to start building those connections with their classmates and with their teachers, we really need to focus on, on seizing that moment while we can. Because it could, it could disappear quickly and none of us can predict how this thing's going to look in October, November, December.
I especially agree with what you said there last. One of the emails I got from a lady whose child has special needs and is at high risk, as she put it, and I'm not going to mention any names obviously, but she wants her student in this building five days a week because he needs to interact with his peers. That was her words. And she said how, I don't remember the exact wording she put, how he went backwards last spring because he was not around his peers as much as he should have been. And she strongly suggests that we go five days a week.
Well, I'm just going to hop in quick and, and say, I'm not certain that it's fair to sit here and attack the administration for not considering the kids. You know, they were given a set of guidelines by the CDC with, with directives to, in the CDC's mind, the best, the best way to keep the kids healthy. We were fortunate enough to have two medical professionals in our community give their time and provide input. So, so regardless of where, where I believe we need to land here, I, I'm not sure it's fair to, to attack the administrators and say that they weren't considering the kids because I think the, the health of the kids and the health of the teachers is exactly where they were coming from.
You're right. I, I don't think any of us are intending that. There is no right answer here. And so I don't want this to come across as saying anybody didn't do what they, at least from my perspective, didn't do what they should. But we're coming at it from a lot of different perspectives and we serve a lot of different constituents.
I would like to address your, your plan for taking Wednesdays off. Again, valuable teaching time, we're, we're just letting go. I, I can't imagine it's going to take a day to clean the buildings. I mean, kids get out at 2 o'clock on Wednesdays anyhow and, and everybody again rolls up their sleeves and pitches in, how clean the buildings? I, I don't under, I don't understand. I don't understand the concept behind that. I mean, there's an expectation. Public education, get our kids in school. I hear time and time again.
I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with anything that, that's been said, other than the fact that you, you feel that we, we haven't taken any other thoughts, any other concerns into mind when, when we've had these discussions. We, as an Advent team, we've been meeting for quite some time. And when we started meeting in the, in the spring of the year, my first directive to the rest of the Advent team was as, as we start this virtual learning process, we have to make sure we keep in mind what is going on inside the house. Are both parents laid off? And, and the concern is, how am I going to pay my mortgage or rent payment? How am I going to put meal on the table the next night? Versus making sure that my son or daughter's worksheet is done for tomorrow. Are both parents working and not getting home until five or six o'clock at night? And then their child needs to have that additional help from the parent. I can speak from experience, my own wife teaching kindergartners at six o'clock at night from six to eight, or sorry, six to seven, multiple nights a week. And I know my own staff has done similar things to that. As I started out saying, there is not one staff person that does not want every single kid back in here five days a week. As we know that that's the best education that they can be provided is by that happen. We have taken as much input from, from everybody that is giving it because every person that gives you guidance says, work with your local health department, work with your local county agency, work with your local, it's a local decision. So we have taken all of that guidance. We've taken what the DPI and the Department of Health Services out of Madison sent us, that education forward. We've taken the guidelines from Iowa County Health, Debbie Sigentower. We've taken the guidelines from Dr. Fox, Upland Hills, COVID-19, you know, she's in charge of the COVID-19 response for Upland Hills. We've taken all of that and tried to put it in a plan that we know is far from perfect. We hope it's better than what we were doing in the fall. If you remember the movie Apollo 13, we have a problem and the guy, the engineer comes in with duct tape and cardboard and a box and says, the problem?
Yeah.
Your staff, the staff that you paid did more with less because they didn't even get the cardboard box. It was, we're done. We're not bringing kids back. Figure out how to do virtual. Middle school, high school had at least one day to practice and prepare for that. Elementary staff, none. And, and did they provide the same education they would have provided had everybody been in school? Absolutely not. And not one person would admit that.
And it's not the teacher's fault for doing, for that.
Absolutely, absolutely not.
It's the process Mitch. You can't expect, you can't expect people to go into their iPads or MacBooks and, and look up assignments and try to figure the stuff out on their own. It doesn't work that way. And I don't care if a kindergartner, third grader, or a junior taking AP courses at, at a, at a freshman college level. It doesn't work. They need that interaction. If we wanted to homeschool, we would have been homeschooling a long time ago. And I hear that from parents all over. They don't want to homeschool.
I agree. And I don't want them to homeschool. I don't want them to, that is their option. I don't want them to have that as the option. I want their number one option to be everybody here every day.
It was the Pediatric Foundation Organization, whatever.
American Association.
Put out of state, we all heard it. Kids got to get back to school. It's more dangerous having kids at home than at school.
Doc, would, would the doctors like to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I'd like to. Just recently, as you know, Los Angeles decided they're not opening their schools. There's a lot of controversy Larry here. I know the American Academy of Pediatrics said that school is good for kids for multiple reasons. But I'm, I'm going to ask you a question. Let's say we open it up and they all come in, and this is a hypothetical. One kid tests positive. How many of the kids then do we send home? Do we send home just that group or the whole group? I mean, there's a lot of questions surrounding this. And actually I got a different bunch of calls of people that want to keep their kids home because they feel it's safer health-wise. It's been proven that kids get less severe illness. There is this multi-system problem that a few kids are getting and dying from. But I mean, there's a lot of controversy about sending kids back to school. I mean, it isn't just cut and dried. I wish it was. That's my opinion.
And Doc, you asked me a question about what we would do if, if a child was suspected of having And Doc, you asked me a question about what we would do if a child was suspected of having COVID.
Well, it's not addressed in this outline either. It doesn't say.
And, and it has to, and I think a simple, how to handle it, Doc, would be a simple flow chart that all parents.
Well, they got, they got a flow chart there if you're running a temperature and so it's in there and.
But it's gotta be simple and, you know, easy to understand. It's gonna, I would be very surprised if it did happen. I think there's a high, there's a high percentage chance that is going to happen.
I think so, yeah.
Earlier, possibly when, when things start cooling off and things get more back inside, and what the experts are telling us, it could, it could ramp up more significant this fall during the winter months. Our schools, and I'm not only talking about Mineral Point, our schools need to prepare for that. Just because we send the kids home doesn't mean that we have to send our 100 employees home. The teachers, the staff, there's plenty of room in here without kids. A teacher can set up here, one can set up in the hallway. And if we have live interaction with their students as a whole, personally, I don't think we skip a beat. If we're gonna, if we're all gonna run to our basements like we did in March, the middle of March, and lock our doors, I don't know what's gonna become of these kids. I really don't.
Well, that, that was the directive. We, nobody in the state of Wisconsin had a choice. I understand that, but now we know. We do.
I wish we did know, Larry. I don't think we know.
To answer one of your questions, if we get one child, then they will do, the county will do some contact tracing. If, in, in trying to help make this better for everybody, the reason behind the suggestion of the cohort model might be that that classroom now stays home instead of the whole building. The Iowa County Health said there might be times when it is, if it's prevalent in your building, your building is home. And we know we're gonna go 100% virtual. Our, our plan is to, if we get shut down, our plan is to not just sit and do nothing. Our plan is to go all to virtual.
And that's, that's the reason I kinda like this blended plan because I'm concerned that could happen. And the blended plan gives you that ramp up on the virtual, which has to happen, in my opinion.
Let me go back and clarify. As I said earlier, it should be up to the parents. I'm not saying you need to send your kids to school. If there's a family that wants to leave their, their children at home, learning virtual, I'm 100% okay with that. I think there should be a choice between A and, and C, and, and forget about B on your, on your plans there. That.
Larry, Larry, I'm not, I'm not quite following you, Larry, because you said you think all the kids should be back in school. That's what you originally said. And now, are you changing?
It should be up to the parents to decide.
Oh, okay. So it's up to the parents now.
Up to the parents to decide whether their children should be in school or not. And then the survey, if you remember, I talked about a survey, which I have, I have read in multiple emails, and it's funny because I thought the same thing. A survey should be sent out. Would you prefer to send your child to school or learn at home through some method? And at that point, then you're gonna get an idea of how many students you're gonna have in your buildings.
Well, to, to jump ahead further then, we have an admin meeting scheduled for tomorrow and based on the board direction tonight on the reopening plan, then we are going to put together survey questions to send out to our parents. So if the board gives the direction to say, I want your option to either be everybody's here or you're virtual, then that's, that's how we will formulate the survey and put that information out.
Not, not everybody. Would you like to send your child to school or keep them home? There's a choice and, and it can be modified. Parents can make the decision on their own. Little Johnny was running a low-grade fever. I think I should keep him home. So I called in and little Johnny would be out of school for the next two weeks. We're gonna be learning virtually. That's how this has to work, I think.
And that's what this flow chart talks about. You know, if you, if you have, if you wake up and you have these symptoms, then you should probably stay home. You could call in to school and we can set those kinds of things up, but that's, that's, it's the same kind of model of that blended model where I might not be required to lay in bed. I might not be that sick, but I have some of the symptoms. My class is on at, you know, algebra's on at 9:45 in the morning. I can log on and I can be part of the algebra class that's going on while the rest of my classmates are in the same classroom. They're all here.
That would be a recorded, a recorded class then.
They would take it.
That'd be live.
That would be live. They would always be taken at the same time. They could get in through a Zoom meeting and, and be involved in the class as it's happening.
What's, what's missing from the current blended model that we're talking about is I have the option of sending my kid to school two days a week or one day a week, depending on where they're at in, in grade-wise, or the option of keeping them home, but nowhere am I given the option of saying, my student learns best by being face-to-face and I want to opt for my student to be here five days a week.
And, and again, I come back to, if that, if that's the direction you want to give us as an admin team, then that's the direction we'll go. We've taken information, and Dr. Dunn was, was part of the meeting with Dr. Fox, we, we've taken the information from those experts and, and trying to present a model that meets the current recommendations. If, if you say to me, this is the direction we want to see the district go, then that's the direction we'll go. That's the information we'll ask from our families. Here are, here is the plan that we have going forward. We're going to be here five days a week from 8:00 until 3:25. If you choose to send your kids to school, that's what's gonna happen. If you choose to stay home and attend virtually, that would be an option. If, if that's the direction, but I want to be able to ask people based on what we think is going forward. I don't want somebody to say, well, it all depends. I, I might send my child to school, but what are you doing? How's it gonna play out? Are they gonna do X, Y, and Z? So if we have something that I can share with the parents, now they can make a better decision, a more informed decision, and give us more accurate information going into the school year.
Well, like, like, nobody knows what's gonna happen. But just simply asking that question, would you be comfortable sending your child to school five days? There's no harm in asking that question. Nobody's tying our feet to concrete for that. If you get enough feedback saying, no, I'm not comfortable, then we're gonna have to look at the options. But I'd like to get something done immediately because August 24th ain't far away and I think everybody would like to know what's gonna happen. And I don't care if we gotta meet in special meetings two or three times. You know, we all knew that it was gonna be tough decisions. Let's get on ball. Let's get it done.
Dr. Dunn, do you wanna make any comments on this matter? We haven't heard from you.
Uh, sure. I just wanna say that, I mean, I got a lot of things to say, but I mean, I, I share the sense of urgency here. I share the strong desire to get all the kids in school as much as possible. But here's what we know. The virus isn't going anywhere. It can be spread by kids, usually older kids. And if we have a positive test that we know is inevitable in the school, we're gonna have to quarantine every kid that came in contact with that kid, that positive case, who was in contact with that person i- in a classroom or face-to-face contact for more than several minutes. And the concern that we had in my limited participation with the administrative team in formulating this plan, the concern that we had is if we have large classes and let's say 90% of the kids come back and 10% elect for 100% virtual, we have 90%. We don't have enough space to necessarily spread out 90% of the school. Now, we could have everyone wear masks if we have limited spacing. But what we do is we increase the risk of spread if kids are packed in a classroom or if they're following around, intermingling with different kids for different electives, going to lunch, PE, et cetera. And the other problem is if, if we have that happen, say we've got a positive case that we didn't know about that day, who was at school and we find out they're positive the next day, we have to find out who that kid was in contact with. And the bigger the exposure that we allow, the more kids have to stay home. And that is a greater threat to a full school lockdown, which is what we want to avoid. It's also a greater threat to a teacher getting sick. And if we hit a certain threshold, say 30% of our staff get sick, then we gotta shut down there too. Remember, we, remember some schools shut down because of the influenza outbreak infected too many teachers, right?
Right.
So, so the question then was, well, how do we limit the damage, mitigate the damage? That's not a good word, but you get what I'm saying. It, if we get a positive case in the school, how do we minimize the amount of kids that that affects and the amount of staff that that affects? And the conclusion that the group came to was that we create very small groups and we keep them together through the entire school day. And they do not co-mingle with other kids. And, and ideally, they are not bust with other kids. And if, in that way, if there's a, if there's a group of 10 kids, 12 kids where there's a positive case, then we have to quarantine only 12 kids and watch them at home instead of quarantining an entire grade or an entire hallway, or I, I don't know how bad it could be. But that was where we came with this blended model so that we can accommodate, we have enough space to accommodate smaller groups and try to minimize the amount of spread if we get a kid who's infected and comes in school. Now, true, Larry, I mean, yes, if a kid has a fever, they should stay home. And we have to trust that the fever is identified and we need to trust that the parent will identify any possible COVID symptoms in a kid and, and keep them home with all the risks that come with that, including possibly the parent having to stay home from work, which is a pain. Right? I mean, we, we're used to sending our kids home with a sniffle, kids to school with a sniffle as long as they don't have a fever. That changes now. So it's gonna make things very difficult. So, and on top of that, this virus is very unique because it becomes contagious before symptoms start. So kids might not even know they have it and then two days later they develop a fever and they're positive and they've been in school all week. So we're anticipating those worst-case scenarios and how do we minimize the effect of the entire school when that happens? And that's how this blended model came about because the, the main goal was to have these kids in small groups and how do we accommodate that with the limited space and staff we have? And that was what came up with this. Now, I think you make a great point saying, well, you know, A is 100% at home, B is a hybrid model where the kids are in school, part-time and home, part-time. And then what about C, where parents have an option to send the kids five days a week? And, you know, I think about the, the two-parent working homes. The kids who, you know, aren't getting a reliable, you know, internet experience or virtual experience, you know, lack of parent oversight. You know, high-risk kids, special needs kids. You know, like Gary, Gary's example that, you know, a parent needed their kid to just have the social interactions, you know? Lots of reasons for, for certain situations where the kids would benefit from five days a week. You know, my question for the administration, is there any way that we could accommodate a small percentage of students under that situation and yet still, you know, preserve our goal of minimizing spread and keeping any kind of quarantine or contact tracing that happens? You know, keep, keep those to a minimum so that we don't have to shut the whole school down. Matt, do you wanna, or if any of the administration wanna chime in as far as whether they talked all that through from a logistics standpoint, I, I'd like to make sure that that option is not possible because I did hear from some parents that say, I would like my kid to be there five days a week. And is there any possible way that we can accommodate that?
I don't, I don't see how we could do that. I also wanna just add to what Dr. Dunn was saying and he explained it very well. We're just trying to minimize risk. We're not removing risk just by going into the building. You're accepting a risk. I also wanna kinda point out that the, the community risk that we're putting people in here by if we bring in a virus, an infection and then they go home and they have to quarantine while they're with their family, right? And so what does that do for that family, for the community? So I think about that too. But to answer your question, Dr. Dunn, I don't see how we could accommodate that.
Well, I'll weigh in my little opinion here. Obviously, I'm, I'm kinda on the boat that I would like to see my kids back in school all the time. I think that's the best for them. However, I'm not an expert in, in the medical field and we've asked three of the probably most respected doctors in the county for sure, if not a larger area. And, you know, there is science to it, whether we believe it or not. I, I, again, I'm still kinda on the fence about the whole thing, but clearly there's something to it. I don't know the best option. Like Joni said, you know, we, we put them all in there because eventually somebody's gonna get it. Whether it's a hybrid model or it's the all-in model, everybody in. So then what? Kinda like Dr. Dunn said, well, if they're in cohorts, then we can, okay, take these 10 kids, 20 kids out because they were in contact. So the whole school's in, so then tap the school out. I don't know the answer. I do like the idea of a survey. I don't know how it's gonna turn out. It's gonna be probably 50/50 on that. I do like, I do like that last option that, that just came up too. Look, you know, we do a, a super hybrid model where, you know, you give them the option, you're, you're there five days a week if somehow logistically, I know Matt said that, Mr. Renwick said that that would be very hard to do. But, you know, there is kids that need that all day, every day. I know it's hard. My wife and I, we work full, full-time jobs. We get home and we're exhausted. We don't, you know, fortunately enough, we're, you know, our kids are able to, to learn quickly and, and it's okay. But not everybody's like that. So there's no right answer. That's my opinion on the matter and I, I.
I, I just wanna compliment Aaron on this work that he's done with the committee. This is scientifically based with the idea of social distancing, small groups, containment. I mean, this has taken a lot of work on their part to put this together and I gotta compliment you. I think it's been very well done. And I'm not gonna shoot any holes in it. I, I think this is excellent, what you've done.
I just,
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, I think bringing our students back full-time, five days a week, it's like rolling the dice and we're just gonna hope and pray that nobody becomes sick. And I don't know about everyone else, but I feel like my duty is to keep our students and staff safe. And bringing them back full-time, not being able to social distance, trying to keep minimal students in the hallway, you know, and interacting with each other with large groups, that's gonna be almost impossible. And whose responsibility and whose shoulders is it gonna fall on if one of our students or one of our staff members gets sick and become really ill? Because we're back full-time.
But we, there, there's a risk that any one of us could get this though at, at any time and become seriously ill. I think that whether, the only way to do that is to go 100% virtual. So.
But you're increasing it, bringing 350 kids back at once.
Yes.
I have, I've started this conversation with multiple people saying, this will be the first 100% decision I get to make. 100% of the people are not gonna be happy. I, I, I truly believe that because there's gonna be people that, there's no vaccine, it's not safe, I'm not sending my child. This isn't right. I want my child there from 8 till 3:25, five days a week and, and everywhere in between. The other side of the coin that has been briefly mentioned a couple of times, if, if you think of, yep, younger. If, if you think of, yeah, younger kids tend to handle this better. They're more asymptomatic. They, they recover much more quickly. But the adult in the classroom, there, there are several staff members who are in kind of that high risk category. We, I know for sure we have multiple diabetes. I know for sure that I have one staff member whose immune system is completely compromised due to a health issue they went through a year ago. And I, and having to look at this from every standpoint and look at it from the adult standpoint, look at it from the parent standpoint, look at it from the student standpoint. So I say it's a 100% decision. This recommendation came forward based on the best information we had available from the medical professionals. Again, if you, if you wish to give us the direction to say, this is the plan that we're going to put forward, this is our plan for reentering. We're going to have everybody back five days a week. If you're, are you comfortable sending your student to school knowing that? Yes or no? The next question. If your answer is no, would you be interested in virtual learning? And it would be synchronous, so it would be happening. Your student would stay home. So at eight o'clock, if I'm supposed to be in physical science, I log into a Zoom meeting, I'm in Mr. Stagger's physical science class. I'm just at home on my computer. Second hour, I walk across the hallway and I'm supposed to be in algebra. So now at nine 40 or eight 50, I'm, I'm now in Mrs. Knowles' algebra class. I'm logged into a Zoom meeting, I'm in her classroom. And, and we would do it in that fashion. Or that's a fashion we could do it. We were informed by Shayna Lewis that if you record the instruction and students are in the room and Mr. Chambers asks me a question and I say, yes, Nate, the answer to that question is, you know, whatever. That has now become an academic record that now needs to be stored. You need to save that academic record if we record. That's the advice that Shayna Lewis had given us.
What's wrong with that?
The, the, um, I'm not sure where we would be able to store all of that information.
I think that's the future, Mitch. I think with the influenza outbreak, as Dr. Dunn mentioned earlier, that is the future to, to record video and voice. So it's easier for kids to stay home and interact with the class as it's going on. And just think, if you recorded it, Mitch, just think of, oh, my Emma didn't get something in a, in an AP class, just didn't quite understand it. She could go home, go back, listen to the lecture. That is perfect. Colleges have been doing that for, for decades, Mitch. High schools, especially high schools, got to get on board. Middle schools and elementary schools, I would recommend too. That camera technology is simple, it's easy. I mean, if we can't get cameras installed by, by August 24th, whatever the magical day is, we're doing something wrong. I mean, there's a $50 camera on everybody's laptop is all we need to start with. I would like to expand that, hardwire all buildings for cameras.
I'm not worried about the recordings themselves, but I'm thinking about the amount of data that is to store and the server capacity necessary to manage.
On a day, daily, weekly basis, it could be downloaded off to something else, Joni. Hey, this is the government. We're spending, I don't know, we're spending around here a year, probably $10 million per year. Recording information is the least of my worries.
Dr. Dunn?
Well, Larry, I think you make a good points. I, I want to just make a little, uh, point out a little difference between two different situations here. One would be a student who's at home. Should we make that student available? Should, should we make that, that teacher lecture that it's happening with the other kids in person? Should we record that and make it available to that student at home? I think that's one question. The other question, which, uh, I think allows for maybe more in-person interaction, which is where the value of the education comes is can a student at home participate in real time?
I think that would be great.
With, with a class that's going on in the, in the building?
Perfect, Dr. Dunn.
Mr. Austin, I know that, and yeah, Mr. Womack, I think we talked about that briefly before. Can you speak to the, the tricks with that?
Yeah, I can. We actually, I think it's on the board agenda tonight. Ever, it's a quote for, uh, equipment called Swivel where we can connect a classroom and virtually stream instruction. So we wouldn't have to record through Zoom. But it would hook up, you know, some, uh, some places in the classroom plus the teacher with sensors. And then an iPad would follow instruction and record that audio so that anyone could follow along at home.
And.
Would the, or Matt, would the, would the teacher be on video?
Yeah.
At that time?
Yeah, yeah, it would follow the teacher. We use it with their student teachers when they have to record themselves teaching and then they have to part of their portfolio, so.
Matt, so would we have to purchase a unit for every teacher in the district?
I think with, with the cohort model, we could, because we would be trying to deliver very consistent instruction per grade level, we could just get one classroom to be connected.
At each level.
Yeah, at each level. So we'd have to purchase one per grade levels. It's the plan right now, but that can change if I haven't thought of something.
Can we talk about virtual learning a little bit? Uh, because I think there have been some good points from the board about how the virtual learning experience in the fourth quarter maybe left a few things to be desired. And that really was nobody's fault because the whole thing just got thrust on everybody. Can we, can someone from, can the, can the principals and, and Mr. Wainwright talk about? You know, because as a parent, if you were to tell me that the virtual experience for this coming year is going to be very similar to that in the spring quarter, I would be very nervous about that for my kids' prospects of learning anything significant. But I know that that's been, that's been talked about and, and addressed. Could you guys talk about how the virtual experience will be different in the fall and hopefully improved, what improvements will be made?
I can speak to start. So I read all the comments from the feedback from the spring survey we did. And I posted it on the school blog, but once we get direction from the board, I plan at least speak with my staff about here are some consistent practices, PK five, right? To prepare for virtually instruction wise and just keep, there was a lot of good things that happened, but there were, you know, there just some inconsistencies because of how fast we moved to virtual. But, um, we would spend some time just preparing for that, uh, that kind of prospect where we're embedding some of those more promising practices that parents told us they really appreciated such as conversations and, and video conference tools like Zoom, which very much appreciated. Authentic types of projects and meaningful work was very much a, a positive, so.
Mitch, Mitch, yeah, thanks, Matt. Mitch, while they're talking, can you pull up in the, the back to school blueprint? The things that, the, the, the points that you mentioned under what would be included in virtual learning? You know, things like weekly check-ins, you know, uh, every student assigned a mentor or advisor. You know, things like clarity and consistency and. Can, can one of you guys also talk to, talk about the flipped classroom instruction model and, and how that would, how that would work?
So, I mean, I can, I can talk a little bit about that here and stuff. So that flip type classroom is where you, you watch, you know, I'm going to pick on if a science teacher decides to record a video and you expect that student to watch the video at night and then they come into the classroom with their questions ready and they're ready for a lab. So it's a more, it's not necessarily a homework, you know, go home and do an assignment. It's a go home, watch this video so we can come back tomorrow ready to discuss it. In the, in this blended type model or this virtual type model, yeah, we've talked more about having weekly check-ins with students. And on that Wednesday, I understand it looks like, okay, we're not, I guess, there. Teachers would still be expected to be there. They would be expected to host meetings. You would want to have check-ins on that day. You can get a little more instruction on that day, but it would be that virtual setting to allow us to deep clean the building and to bring in some of those extra, I think, like Angie talked about, you know, bring in a couple of other kids that need more touches in that sense. The flip, the project based learning, I think, has to be a focus with the virtual. If we do this blended model, you might learn about it on Monday. And by the time you get back to school on Monday, you've done this project with that information or that content that you've learned about the past month. So there'd be more, I guess, push for this blended project based learning, flip classroom instruction so that you can have more discussion around it. And it would allow students to kind of, I would, I would attribute that more to that college type of feel. You know, it's learn about this outside, come back in, we're going to have this discussion or learn about this on that Wednesday and on Friday, uh, we're going to have a Zoom meeting from 10 to 11 where there's a break and I want you to join in and just discuss that or put it on a padlet discussion board. So there's some options that way when we talk about project based or flip classroom instruction. Be a little bit different in the sense that way. We would go to grades in the fall for sure. Most teachers after getting through the spring felt comfortable enough to give grades. But at the beginning of that, we didn't know where that comfortability would stand because we didn't see kids at all. The blended model, whether it's everybody in all day, every day, or it's the blended model, at least we get a touch one day a week with physical interaction. And I think that's the biggest goal of that blended model, if that's the way that we were to go. At least we're getting a single touch or a double touch if we're able to get better numbers. Where we can have kids in, well, okay, you have touches with people, but then it's more on your own classroom, college type of prep model in my mind. Angie?
I think one other thing that we as administrators had talked about too, after looking at the feedback from the parents was aligning a platform that would be used consistently across the district. Last spring, you know, some teachers used CSO, some used Remind, some used Google Classroom. And the feedback we're hearing in our administrator meetings across CSO and just from our parents too, is it's a lot to figure all of those out. So we talked about, you know, maybe user, going to CSO for pre K two. It's just more user friendly at that age and then consistently using Google Classroom 312. And that would allow us to do some more in-house training with our staff so that everybody has the same expectations of how things are put on, how assignments are listed, how, you know, you can give feedback, how items are collected, how you post, you know, your weekly messages or, or whatever, so that it's not this endless scrolling that maybe some of you got. So it would give us, um, in-house tools, but then hopefully make the virtual learning a little more consistent. Everybody would know where to go to get the information that they needed to have.
I think being able to have some professional development on these different platforms will also help going into the school year.
Dr. Dunn?
This is mainly for Angie, but I mean, you know, I think about these kids that may be considered homeless. They've got situations at home where virtual learning is just not going to go well for, for various reasons. And if we, if we have two choices between 100% virtual and partly virtual and, you know, maybe they do okay in school, but when they're home virtually, they're struggling for, for various reasons. What kind of assurances can the board have that those kids are number one, identified ahead of time as maybe being high risk for struggling more, just like they're identified struggling in school? And what kind of extra effort can we make to make sure that the virtual environment is at least adequate? Or can we give, can we give added support, resources, supervision? So that we really don't leave a significant amount of kids left behind come end of this school year?
So I will say that I think what we did really well in the spring is identified families who because of equity issues, you know, no internet based upon where they live, they didn't have devices, they didn't have access to tools. I think we did a really good job of identifying those families that need help for the virtual setting, be it they just need devices in their home, they need us to help get internet into their house through, you know, through our hotspots, which I know that we're looking at getting some that work a little more reliably in some of our outer areas. You know, we do have a process in place to identify students both, you know, low income and or homeless that would have some money set aside through title to be able to provide some of those services to them. But I will say, most of our extra contacts last year came not only from the teachers, but our support staff, our instructional assistants met countless hours, one to one with many of our students. And have, some have even continued now over into the summer to provide that, you know, direct contact for them. So I think we have the personnel who are willing to do those things. And I think we have the process in place to identify the families that would need that. You know, I, we're constantly, our, our biggest thing that we're getting now is the, the documentation of data. So we need to, you know, make sure we're consistently looking at data and and considering if students are regressed and how we're going to provide them extra services to make up for that COVID instruction to get them back on track and then making sure that we're continuing to progress. You know, throughout the school year, it's something that we do all the time anyway, but even ramped up more now. But I, I do feel like we have those structures in place. You know, we just have to figure out the best way to make that connection with the students. And, you know, if it's using kind of that off day, if it's trying to, you know, work more with the staff about how we can get them more one to one time, maybe on the days when they're, if we, if we were to do a hybrid schedule, you know, I'm trying to maybe make connections with them on the days they're not in school. You know, setting up Zoom, setting up contacts with them for the, you know, through the instructional assistants and teachers. I feel like our staff is willing to do that. We just, I think we have to, uh, just keep in mind that we're all trying to do what's best for the students and the staff. And I think one of my big concerns when you talk about only virtual or only in, you know, physically in place or virtual pick and choose, we potentially could have 50% of our staff or 50% of our students in the building and 50% virtually online. And then you're asking a teacher to do two full-time jobs. You know, it's a full-time job to teach the students in your classroom and it's a full-time job to support those students that are virtually enrolled at home. Where when we have that mix of hybrid, you know, we can, and you know, Matt Renwick's plan talks about, you know, that third teacher can help moderate the, the virtual students. And so they're not teaching both places. And that, that's a concern for me is just our teachers do a lot of work all the time. And to try and think of doing both all day long, every day is really overwhelming. Aaron has his hand up.
Yeah. I just want to let you finish, Angie, but, uh, thank you. I mean, it sounds like that you're fairly confident that these high-risk kids have been identified and you've got enough staff and resources willing and able to keep an eye on them and make sure that they're, they're advancing as best they can compared to an in-person, full-time setting. Okay, so then the, the next thing is, you know, the full, kids in full time and kids at home. So this board could advise administration to scrap this hybrid model and say, we want either kids in school full time or we want them at home full time. And we want to give parents those choices. And, you know, I was, I mean, Angie. And, you know, I was, I mean, Angie is concerned about the teachers teaching both. You know, I, I think if we had that scenario, let's say it was fifty-fifty, the only realistic way I would see that is if you designate half the staff as virtual teachers and half the staff as in-person teachers, which, you know, uh, is going to be a little difficult. You're going to have a fifth grade teacher maybe doing virtual learning with a third grader or, you know, because it's not going to be apples to apples as far as which kids stay home. You might have eighty percent of the third graders in school and you might have twenty percent of the fourth graders in school. Uh, Matt, you want to speak to that conundrum?
Well, and it gets even trickier at the, uh, high school level because you have teachers that teach multiple grade levels. So, you know, our, it, it breaks up via class and then we have mixed classes. You know, our AIG program will have a class that will have different grade levels in it. Well, how is he supposed to do that and then be a, we have one AIG teacher, so he's going to teach all the in-school and all the virtual, because there is nobody else to teach the AIG part. Um, and they're, they're divided up by, I guess, classes in that sense. So it's more difficult to say, yeah, you do all the virtual, you do this, but you're not certified to teach AIG, so you can't do virtual.
So we talked a little bit though about, about using some sort of live streaming technology that allows for interaction. If, if that technology is embraced or used, do we have to dedicate different teachers? Does it take more for a teacher who's live streaming an algebra class to ten kids in the room and five kids at home? Is that harder than, than live streaming a class but having all fifteen students in the room?
Tony, if I could just.
Silly.
I'm sorry. I, I think to me, what comes to my mind is, you know, that teacher, when they're in the classroom can reteach and give feedback and provide more examples there. For the students that are at home, we're still going to have to find time in our day to make those individual connections with them, to make sure that they understood what was taught, to reteach it if they need to, to give them more examples. And so if they're, you know, doing this virtually, if it's a discussion in class, they can participate, but that connection of did they get it? Or if it's a student who needs it retaught is going to have to be done at a time outside of the class. And I don't know when that time would be if they're teaching other classes.
But if I'm following this right, if it has to be retaught, why couldn't you just go back and watch the lesson plan again?
Because if you didn't get it the first way, the first time, you're probably not going to get it if it's retaught exactly the same way the second time. You know, I mean, that's, that's what our teachers do is they do those check-ins to say, did the kid get it? And if they don't, they find a different way to teach it to them. Because me just saying it over is not going to help them get it a second time, you know? Um, and so I, I, I think that's the hard part for me with, if half the class is there and half the class is virtual, I can't give virtual feedback at the moment when I have ten other kids in my classroom.
So.
Well, go ahead. Well, so I'm thinking again, a class of fifteen, if there's fifteen kids in the class and three of them need support and they walk to the, to the back of the classroom after the lesson, while I'm work, after the lesson has been taught and I'm working on my work, or the teacher goes back to their desk and gets three IMs and says, hey, I didn't get that. Is, isn't it the same amount of time invested? Or is it just quicker because the students there and rather than it being an IM conversation, it's, um, it, it's face-to-face? I guess that's, if, if you're, if you're supporting the same number of students with the same type of, of additional support, um, in, in a live setting, like whether it's virtually live or face-to-face live, is, is the time commitment different?
Can I make a comment? Uh, I, I would like to say we're getting lost in the weeds here. Um, I think, uh, a lot of these issues are legitimate and I'm concerned about them. But I don't think we're going to be able to answer them tonight. And some of these will be ongoing things that teachers will have to modify, improve, self-educate, educate us. I think, I think we're getting a little lost in the weeds here and we need to go back to see if, what plan we're going to use for opening up the school, because we're already talking about how it's being done instead of deciding how it is to be done. I, I think we're getting a little lost here. Just my opinion.
Okay.
So I've got a couple more comments. If, uh, if we're going, if, if, if we go with the hybrid model Plan B, I don't know what that does for, for gym classes, but, uh, a day, two days a week or whatever. Vicki's point as far as, as a separation of kids and creating more space, I think that the gym is a space that could be utilized. Um, the whole macro room, beautiful room, never used for nothing other than to store what I call junk in there. That can be cleaned out, utilized. Um, Mr. Robinson's egg shop. You know, maybe, maybe the, the shop skills, if kids are only going to be in school a day or two a week, well, there's going to be no shop anyhow. So there's another room that could be utilized. It's easy to sit here and make excuse after excuse after excuse why it can't be done. And I understand and, and I'm, I'm as worried about child safety and the, the safety of employees as anybody. But, uh, we don't have all the answers tonight. But, uh, leaving our, leaving our kids home, I believe is, is not, not the right answer. And again, I'll say it again. Um, uh, recording, recording lessons, um, cameras in classrooms, I, I've, I think, uh, I think that, that would be so important during this time and moving forward. And I think maybe Mineral Point could be a, a model for other schools to follow if, if they wish to seize the moment. And I've heard enough excuses too, so we can move on.
Okay, so at the end of this, um, are we in agreeance to have, um, to Mitch send out a, a poll to this, to the parents and the students? And if so, are we going to include all three models? Question, I've got two doctors with fingers up. What's up?
Well, mine is okay if we do that, which is okay with me. Uh, I'd like to kind of know what the community thinks, but what are we going to consider as an adequate survey? Okay. And what's the timeframe for return? I want to get those things answered ahead of time so that we don't sit around and debate, well, gee, we only got three returned surveys, you know, I, I, you know, I want some definition here before we do that. That's just my thought, because we've been through this survey baloney before.
I've got some ideas for the survey.
Dr. Dunn, you had something too?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I was going to say exactly what Everett said, we need some ground rules on under which conditions we would accept the survey data in terms of an acceptable response rate, regardless of the outcome, uh, et cetera. And then I think when you talk about what the board wants to know from the community, um, you know, I think, uh, I think it would be important to know whether, whether we decide to accommodate that or not. I think it would be important to know parents are comfortable, given the current risk and the fact that we may not be able to, you know, all, all the risks that we've talked about with everyone coming back to school. You know, would parent, which, you know, which parents would be in favor of sending their kids to school full, full-time under these conditions? And then secondly, you know, I think offering a hybrid model, I think, I think parents want their kids to have some in-person contact. They'd like to see some improvements with the virtual experience. Um, and I think if there's, uh, but they also want their kids safe, right? So I think there's some parents that are looking to see, what's the school doing to keep my kid from getting sick? Um, and what's my school doing to make sure my kid gets a high-quality virtual education when the kid's home? I think if we spell that out clearly, then, 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 and I think the blueprint does start to do that. Um, so that information needs to be shared with the public, obviously, so that parents know, okay, what's the hybrid model mean? And then lastly, you know, what does a hundred percent virtual mean? And again, how would this virtual experience be, um, different or improved from what the parents experienced in the spring? I think that, I think that getting that information would be, would be helpful. Before we do that, I want to, I just want to make sure that, I want to confirm that the administration feels like they've gotten adequate input from the staff. Uh, and, uh, I mean, I know everyone wants to be back full-time. I mean, I know, but under the current conditions, are we having a lot of teachers saying, I will not teach in person? I do, I do not feel comfortable teaching in person this school year or under certain conditions. Um, you know, are, are, you know, the every, I hear people saying, well, what if the teachers threaten to not teach because they're uncomfortable? Do, I want to make sure that we feel confident that um, the teachers are on board with this administrative proposal. Um, at least if not unanimously, unanimously, at least a significant enough majority where the administration feels like we'll have staff comfortable with any of these strategies if we decide to move forward with them.
We've reached out to the teachers. I think there's a varying level between the two. Where there's some teachers that, yep, they'd feel fine coming back full. Uh, most are, are comfortable coming back in some capacity. Uh, but I think there's a mix, you know, some that would be comfortable coming back full-time, five days a week. And there's some that would be way more comfortable coming back in a blended model where you're limiting the number of students in a classroom. Because remember, when we get to the high school level and we bring everybody back, we're talking fifteen to twenty, twenty-two kids in a classroom, depending on how many sections there are and how we can fill out that day. So we are talking, you know, double or close to triple the number at times of students in a classroom in a confined space.
I would, I would concur with Matt. I, I, the original plan, um, was sent to my leadership team. And then we revised it, talked to the administrative team. And then the entire faculty was able to jump on a Zoom chat with me, it was available, um, just to continue to talk about it. And I would, like I said, I would concur with what Matt is saying. There's a, a wide gamut. There just seems to be some competing commitments. Uh, admirable that, you know, we want these kids in school because we know how important it is for them to be there. At the same time, we don't want to get, you know, we don't want to make it worse. And, and so it's just a really tough spot. And it's, it's across the board.
I would, I would say same. I, they just want to be safe and smart. And it's not making excuses, you know, of not wanting to come back full-time. It's just being safe and smart about it.
Nate, Nate has some information.
Oh, I just got something passed along to me that Darlington supposedly, uh, just basically passed, um, to go to school five days a week. Not that it's relevant to Mineral Point, but just a little bit of knowledge that was just passed to me.
And it's not relevant either, but my sister-in-law teaches in Milwaukee and Milwaukee just announced they're doing a hundred percent virtual. So.
So yeah, it's, it's, it's depending on the, on the area.
Are you comparing Milwaukee to Mineral Point?
I think that's a great, a great thing to talk about is that, that this, the virus is real and we're all impacted. I mean, like the, as a nation or as a, as a race, we're being impacted. The, the human species is being impacted. But that what's happening in rural, smaller communities is not the same as what's happening in Milwaukee or not, not to the same level of prevalence. So we don't have to do what Milwaukee does or what Dean County does.
Not at all. We have to reopen smart.
Yes.
So if your direction is for me to survey the community, the parents, I would like to give them something to respond to. And, and so I'm, if I'm hearing everybody or if I'm hearing the majority of the board say that survey should be, what we're looking at doing then is opening up in-person, five days a week, if you are not comfortable sending your child to school in that scenario. We would offer a, and I will call it virtual, but you will be taking the classes online with your teacher and classmates in a live format.
Live stream, yes.
Is that the direction that you wish to see us go?
And that model can change because you sign up for a five-day in-person. Two weeks later, you want to move to virtual live streaming? That will be an option for parents. That model can change like this. And if you want to put a max number in the school, I would entertain that. And I think parents would be very receptive of that. If, if we can only handle five hundred toll between the two buildings, well, then somebody might have to volunteer to keep their kid home. And personally, I would do that if we were to offer live recorded stream.
If, if we went with this, I'm calling it like AC, like ANC full.
Correct.
Is there a trigger point? And do we need to define it if there is? We're like, man, if we get to the point where we have four active cases in, in any one building or is that something we figure out later?
The, the health department will take those decisions out of our hands.
Okay.
If, if, if we get to that number, the health department is going to come in and say,
You're done?
You, either your middle school, high school building has to shut down or because there are brothers and sisters at both levels, your district has to shut down, you have to go one hundred percent virtual. We all know, we all know that that's the case. We all know that this is going to be a moving target. And we're just trying to have a target to hit at the beginning of the year. So based on this information, the admin team meets tomorrow, we will put together survey questions to get out to our families.
So I, I think that as, if I'm, as a parent, when I read that, I want to know that it's not just a free-for-all. I'm going to send my kid back to school and you know what, nobody ever wears masks and all, all the second graders get to go outside for recess together. And there, I think we still need to talk about increased hand sanitizing stations and different hot lunch protocols. And I, we still, we still need to continue to look for ways to maximize, um, or to minimize, I should say, minimize rest.
Which, and that's all pretty much in that plan.
Yes, so Plan, Plan A still has a lot of that.
Correct, but Plan A as listed looked very short and abbreviated and it was not fair. By the way, Plan A was put out to the parents.
So this is almost a, yeah, this is a complete hybrid. So, and, and it got brought up before Mr. Renwick about this, um, what'd you call it, slither?
Swivel.
Swivel, yeah.
Slither.
Um, we, we, are we going to have to find pricing out for this?
It's one of the things that, Matt, is, is your quote one per grade level right now?
The quote is one per grade level. We have one in the building already because we have anywhere from two to three student teachers in our building, or one to three, I would say. Um, so we already have one in the building, so it'd be for six more.
Would there be any federal funding available for that, considering it's being used? Good point for this.
Yeah, I, I sent the, uh, receipt to Mitch to potentially get FEMA reimbursement if that is still available. I mean, we wouldn't be buying these without these current circumstances.
So the survey is more upfront center right now. So you're, you're meeting tomorrow, Mitch?
For the end of GMS.
So you'll come up with language for the survey, you'll run it by Nate, Nate can put it out to the board for their approval. And by, by tomorrow afternoon, I mean, it's going to be quick, so expect a, a message from, from Nate. Tomorrow afternoon, that survey could go out. And then what I think you should do is have Angie, Janet, um, bring in a secretary at the elementary school, get on the phone and start calling these parents. We've got contact information for everybody in the school, the parents. There's an important survey and, and we, we get this thing turned around fast. I'm, I'm thinking if it goes out tomorrow afternoon, I don't know if two days is too short, but I, I would recommend two days, get that survey back. Parents can be reached one way or another.
Are you, are you suggesting that, that we call and tell people, hey, go online and take the survey?
And if they want to give their.
They can't take a ser, I don't think they can go online and take it unless there's a check. I mean, we can't have somebody going on multiple times, so.
Okay, so the.
That's my, that's my issue.
Virgals?
We could put out.
I, I guess I didn't understand what the.
Or, I, I, I want, I want every parent to know about the survey so they can, they can give their two cents worth. That's what I want. And, and.
We can send out a sky alert.
We could put out an alert, yeah. Um, the only problem with that is we still don't know if all parents got it and maybe they will. I, I guess I, I don't know.
And we could, you could put a two-day deadline on it, but I would go back to something that Dr. Lindsay had said. Is, is there a certain percentage that we need to have in, in those two days? I mean, if we send it out to five hundred families, do we need to have two hundred and fifty? Do we need to have a hundred? Do we need to have four fifty? You know, to come back to Dr. Lindsay's point, what is, is there, is there a number that is an acceptable number? Is fifteen percent, is it a percentage? Is it twenty percent?
I think we need a high percentage. I mean, if we put urgency on it, like you're saying, put a sky. I mean, if we put urgency on it, like you're saying, put a Sky Alert, as bad as it may sound, this is to me more of an issue than the, than the remodel action build.
Yep.
That's just my opinion. I think, you know, people still don't understand that we're built, we're renovating, you know, I just, anyway. So I think if we put urgency on it, like you said with the Sky Alert possibly, get it out there saying, hey, you know, by, I don't know how you word it, you know, if it is, was it Monday? You know, maybe by days end, Wednesday or Thursday possibly.
Well, we would get it out tomorrow sometime.
To, to.
The earliest we could do is get it out tomorrow sometime.
Get it out tomorrow.
And our meeting is at one o'clock, so it would be tomorrow afternoon sometime. So you could have Tuesday after or Tuesday night, Wednesday night.
Can we say the 15th, like, like?
That's a good date.
Like, like the 15th, it goes out on the 15th and by the 20th, five days.
And then how soon do you got to have the notification in the paper, Mitch, that as a board we'll be meeting?
Twenty-four o'clock if it's, if it's an emergency meeting.
And we could have a meeting for Mon, Monday night then? I'm going to do that tonight.
Dr. Dunn and Dr. Lindsay, do you want to weigh in on this, on this survey anymore?
Personally, no, but I'm going to vote no when it comes up for a motion, just to let you know ahead of time. I think these guys have put together a, a great plan and I think they've looked at it very carefully. I think you're opening Pandora's box and you're going to get a multitude of answers and I don't think the survey's going to be helpful. That's my opinion and I'm going to vote no once it's made a motion.
Remember, this is not an action. I'm just seeking direction.
Well, then I, I'm still going to vote no.
Maybe.
Can we have any survey tools that allow us to send a code or password for one-time use?
Joel, are you online?
Yeah, I'm online and I was just going to chime in with that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So most of our surveys that we do, we do through Google Forms. It's free. We, the last ones, we have been doing anonymously, you know, with the regards to the virtual learning. I was just going to suggest, and I don't know if people care, but if you want to make sure that you're getting a cross-representation of grades and we may need to ask people to list the names of their students on this. And that would kind of then eliminate, you know, Andy's problem in the sense that we could weed out if somebody filled it out more than once. But I agree, I do have concerns where, you know, especially if it gets shared online that people that maybe even aren't in our district may, might weigh in, just, you know, you don't know. So this is an important topic, so if you have any objections to asking people, you know, to, to name their stu, you know, just so you know, to name their students or whatever, that might help.
I think that's necessary.
I have no problem.
I think integrity of this survey is important.
And then maybe, maybe by, on the 14th, the, the students that haven't responded, we could then reach out to the parents or at least make an attempt.
And then the other thing I have, only because I've read and been told that it's going to impact the answer, is, is the plan five days a week with the mask mandate as it stands or no mask mandate? Because it's going to change answers, based on what I've been told from, from parents.
I think the.
So I think that information's got to be in the survey.
I, I want to rephrase that. My, my kids are under the understanding that they're going to be wearing masks at school. I, what other people.
Yeah, I agree. I think that has to be.
I think, and to, to just chime in a little bit, in a follow-up conversation with Dr. Fox, he said, if possible, to try to build in what she called a mask break throughout the day. So if you can be six feet apart, if you can get outside, the, the option to take the mask off so students aren't necessarily having to wear the mask every day, all day long, would be something that would be built in to, to how we come back to school. Again, trying to use all the medical advice, the best medical advice we can get our hands on.
So Andy, you bring up a good point. However, let's be, let's be fair and be clear about this. The hybrid model would require masks also.
Right.
Bringing students in the building.
Yeah, and students that come to the building.
I'm just asking, I think that needs to be in.
I have no problem with masks.
In the information provided because somebody will answer yes, they're very much for five days until somebody tells them that their child has to wear a mask and then they will go virtual.
Sure.
So I just, because I've been told that multiple times.
So we will put survey questions together based on this information. I'll get it to Nate and it can be shared with the board, but then we want to get it out ASAP. I'm going to be selfish. If you wish to meet next week, I'm asking that you allow me to meet with you through Zoom virtually.
Okay.
I have my own child who is going to be jumping back into the front line and needs help moving to a new location and I need to be going with her to help her get moved into that location. So I would be gone from the district for several days, making it happen.
When is the 15th, John?
But the.
That's Wednesday.
Fifteenth is Wednesday, so the 20th is Monday.
Could we meet Friday? Are you going to be on Friday, Mitch?
I will be taking off at probably one o'clock in the morning on Friday.
Oh.
It's a two-day trip by car.
And when will you be back?
I would probably be, be back the following Monday, like the 27th.
Well, we got it, you don't.
Well, and I can meet virtually, I can take women with me and I can meet up virtually. Do you think Thursday night is too early? The 23rd? No, this Thursday night.
I think.
That's, I think that's.
Twenty-four hours.
For the, for the staff to accumulate all that information. The eight, the seven? I'm sorry, the.
I'd like to have sixteen, I really would. He's our, he's our administrator, very important in this discussion.
Nice item.
Night is, is, is quick, I, I agree.
Well, Thursday night's quick because we said, let's get the survey out on the 15th because it's a nice date, but originally we said we could probably get the survey out on the 14th.
Right.
So now instead of 24, we move it back to the 14th, we move the survey back to the 14th and we have 48 hours. It's still quick, but it's better.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Um, well, a, a couple of things. First of all, the more I think about it, the more I think the simplest way to survey the community now that we have a proposal from the administration is to present this blueprint, this back-to-school blueprint to the parents in full, which says, which, which outlines the hybrid model, what that would mean for elementary school, middle school, high school. It talks about what virtual learning would mean. It clarifies that every parent can choose 100% virtual if they, should they choose. It also says what in-person means in terms of wearing masks, lunches, recesses, what precautions are going to be taken. It says all of that. And I think we should, we should present this to the parents and say, do you accept this as a plan for the next year or don't you? And to me, a yes answer would be, I'm comfortable with either the hybrid model or the 100% virtual model. I don't even have to say which one I would choose. A, a no answer would be, would basically mean, I'm not comfortable with either of these options, which would basically imply I want my kid in school full time.
Or homeschooled.
Or, or I, I will take my kid, yeah, I, I will have my kid get educated elsewhere.
Here's my concern about that, Dr. Dunn, is that basically just all I had a flashback was a renovation when they didn't have that other option, when a no, they thought a no meant a yes and a yes meant a no or whatever that whole deal was. If you kind of remember that situation. If we give it to them that way, then, then yes, I mean, I, I, you know, yeah, no means no, I'm not happy with this, but we went through that with the renovation project the first time it went to vote.
And again, this survey is merely a tool to ask the parents what they think is best for their own kids.
I totally, I totally agree, Larry, but I think it's important for the parents to all read the blueprint because it explains what these things mean, you know? Because on the one hand, you know, it explains how the virtual experience is going to be different than in the spring. It explains what does a hybrid mean and, you know, what would a schedule look like? You know, the blueprint has that laid out. It says, you know, what precautions are the school ta, is the school taking to keep my kid safe? It lays all that out. I think every parent needs to understand, you know, the complexity of each situation. And I, and, you know, if, if the board is not, if the board's not comfortable with, with my suggestion, I think if we say, are you comfortable with the blueprint or do you want to? I guess, I guess what I would say is, are you comfortable with the hybrid model or 100% virtual as it says in the blueprint? Or do you choose five days a week or 100% virtual with no hybrid? We could present those two choices. And, and just, I think it'd be important to specify that if we do five days a week, that we would, we would try to put in, place the same precautions as much as possible, you know? We couldn't do smaller classrooms necessarily, but we could do masks, you know? We could still do, you know, lunch adjustments. We could still maybe do some recess adjustments, may, you know? We could say we would try to put in the same, in place the same precautions to the best of our ability, you know? We could say something like that.
With the option of the livestreaming as well. So in essence, isn't it almost a, it's a hybrid as well? I mean, it's a little.
No, it's not. It's, no, it's not, Nate, because without, without the hybrid model, your kid is either home for the quarter or your kid is in school for the quarter. Because the administrators have to, have to prepare, you know, for, you know, who is?
How many are going to be in the seats and how many?
How many are going to be in seats, you know, and who many are not?
Doctor?
Larry.
It's, it's not, it is and it isn't if, if a child or a parent wants to send their child to school for the first two weeks, as I alluded to earlier, they have the option to think, to say, oh, the cases are increasing, I'm a little uncomfortable with all this, now, now we're going to keep my child home for, for the next two weeks. So there is that flexibility. It has to be.
It's neither or though. I don't know why we feel we have to eliminate Plan B as an option because there is a subsection of parents who want that weekly check-in with their student and teacher in the building but don't want it with 25 to 30 kids and in the building with 250 kids.
And that's, I, I honestly, Andy, you say that and I would, I would rather have it on the poll.
I'm not, I'm not on board with just eliminating the hard work that everybody's putting.
I would rather see option B, the hybrid and, and this, this new discussion we've talked about. That would, that is my thoughts. I mean, worst-case scenario, we all know, is, is going virtual. So that's what I would rather see if we're going to put something on a questionnaire or a poll. Dr. Dunn?
I mean, I, I, I get parents that want to have their kids in school full-time for multiple reasons, daycare, et cetera. I get that. But I think a parent that chooses that option, should it be available, need to understand that the, the ability to put kids in small cohorts and keep them isolated from the rest of the school, the ability to quarantine small groups of kids so that the rest of the school can stay open, the ability to maybe minimize exposure to staff, that all goes away. Because if you've got 90% of the school full five days a week, the classrooms are going to be bigger than 10 and, you know, it's going to be harder to, to keep them all together and, and recess and gym and all that's going to be way more complicated. So I think that, you know, this is, this is not as simple as it seems and parents need to understand when they're making that choice that, yes, they may get the advantage of the kid be there, there full-time, educational advantage, daycare advantage, et cetera, but there is an increased risk there. And, you know, as Vicky said, you know, the, the staff maybe can't guarantee that kids will be safely distanced and, and it'll be harder to track larger groups of kids as far as mask-wearing, hand sanitizing, et cetera. And I just want to make sure that, you know, I think the blueprint specifies those things and I think if we provide a different option, we need to make sure that they understand the pros and cons and what, what that really means to choose that option, that's all.
Dr. Dunn, we're not creating anything new. This is exactly the way the school has been operating for the last forever before March of this last year.
Right, Larry. I, I don't understand your question. I mean, we can't go back to.
You're making it sound like we're creating a dangerous situation and our kids are in school in March of last year and I, I feel that there's enough support out there in the community that parents are willing to take that risk with precautions in place to get the kids back in school like we had before March of last year. Now you see, you make it sound like all kids are going to come back to school and I don't see that. I don't believe that. I think there's going to be a number that, that will choose to, to keep their, their kids at home. And that's why this survey is so important to find out that number and then we should have a discussion. It's really, the survey should, should have been out before tonight's meeting.
We needed your direction as to what plan, what plan the board would support because without your support as a school board would matter. Nothing, nothing would matter as, as to what we plan without, without the support.
I know, looking back, we should, we should have been meeting two to go on this then.
Well, you know, we didn't. So here's the thing. So we, so we extend, so now I'm back to, okay, so we push the poll back a little bit. We wait till Mitch gets back. That way all the information is out there, right? We give them the two options. That way everybody, it's not, it's not rushed maybe. I mean, how much, how much time are we gaining really? And does it really, is it really, does it really matter?
Well, we've been meeting virtually, why can't Mitch meet virtually?
On your phone, right?
Right, I could call into the meeting.
All you'd have to have is your phone.
With me, I might be able to get to an internet and, and meet through a Zoom meeting.
So what, yeah, so what if we go that route? But we give some sufficient time to, you know, if we're going to have this on the poll, I agree with Dr. Dunn, you know, they, they, if we give them, unless we give them details of, of the, of Plan B, they won't know. You know, I, I, like you said, I'm kind of, I'm for both plans. I wish I could see, obviously, I want the kids in school, but I do understand the cohort issue with, you know, it's, it divides these, these smaller groups so we know. So that's.
The, the concern with, what, what I've heard is the concern with this document is Plan A seems like a lack of thought. Is that accurate?
Where it was just, it's all in and no, it doesn't really state anything.
Right.
Short, sweet, like, hey, all the kids are all back.
When there was some feedback about this.
This has a lot of detail.
A was kind of skipped over and then B was. So do we need to beef up information on back full-time in this document and then provide this document with the survey and say, here are your options, A, B, and C? And get the feedback.
Or A and B and leave C very short and sweet because obviously it's virtual learning.
We can just explain what the virtual experience will be.
Isn't it explained in B? I mean.
Right, right.
Are parents going to understand that it's going to be better virtual learning this year than it was the last three months? Because I, I don't think the average mother or father is going to read that and think, oh, wow, well, they got everything fixed, it's all going to be great now.
Well, then maybe it needs to be improved. That's, that's what.
I don't know.
Is this a document?
Unless you have live stream, recorded video, I don't know how you want to prove it. Students need interaction.
Okay, so either way, we need to, I, I do like the clarity that Andy's saying, you know, if we, if we put together something with more clarity on A and B or more so A, elaborate a little bit.
That's just what I was hearing.
Well, it makes, it makes sense because like you said, Larry, you said it looked like it was just, okay, this, this is it, it's, it's all back in and then, and then this big elaborate hybrid plan. And then again, all, all, all virtual. So, Dr. Dunn?
I think one question is, do we want to know from the parents as a board? Do we want to know at this time in this process? Do we want to know, would the parents send their kid 100% virtual? Would the parents choose hybrid or would the parents choose five days a week full-time? Or do we simply want to know, does the parent want a choice between 100%, 100% virtual and hybrid? Or do they want a choice between 100% virtual and in-school five days a week? Because that's really the reality. Because I don't think we can offer all three options. You know what I mean?
Our, our plan is to not offer 100% virtual school like people remember March, April, May, unless.
Absolutely.
That is not the option we want. It's there because the health department may come down and say, you need to close school down and then our only option is that model. So then we all make, now we're down to two options then, what's the time?
Well, you know, we're going to give the students the option to, to learn virtually though, correct? We're not going to force anybody to come to school.
Right, exactly. Correct. You would go that route then, that, that's, that's where you're going. I, you know, and I've had to. I, you know, and I've had to, I've talked a couple of staff members and I know some other administrators have talked staff members out of, if we have to be 100% virtual to come back, I'm not, I'm not coming back. I'm going to hang it up, I'm going to retire, that's not what I want to do. And we have tried to assure them that that is not our proposal. We are not trying to say, like I just shared before the meeting, Los Angeles and San Diego are saying, we're not, Andy shared Milwaukee, we're not, it's going to be 100% virtual. That's not what we want.
I think maybe we just offer A or B then.
I, I think that if.
And leave, and just put in the document that all, all families will have the option of virtual, virtual learning, which will entail, but an entirely virtual choice is not something, is not something I don't think.
It's not a choice.
It's not, it's not a board support.
I like that. And in, under the.
But we're letting people know they're not going to be forced.
So definition of virtual, this live streaming that we've talked about needs to be in there. So.
It's Joelle again. I was just going to mention that I think people need to know, and what I'm hearing from other districts are, that these three models are maybe not just to the start of the school year, but as options that we may be forced into for the rest of the school year. So to remove that all virtual learning option off the table might be a bit misleading to people as we talked about earlier that unfortunately we, we could get forced into that situation again.
So we could include that in, in any sort of context that we provide, any sort of language we provide at the beginning or end of a survey, but I don't think it needs to be an option that they vote for. Because if we get to the point where it's all virtual, none of us have a say. Somebody's, somebody else made that decision for us.
Okay, so let's move forward with that Mitch.
I will, we'll take care of that tomorrow in the meeting. Do we want to just make next Monday a meeting and I will find a way?
Sure. Yeah, let's do it. 6:30 work for everybody, or Mitch?
So I got a, I got a question Nate and Mitch. Can we meet in the gym for a certain amount of time to let parents come in and voice their opinions on some of this stuff?
I think that would be a really.
They have, they, they have all of our phone numbers, so too though.
They do, and I, I know I've talked to several people too, but people want to be heard. There's, there's some passion around this.
There's no question about it. It was, it's, it's ironic that we, we could have more people in here, but we choose not to. It's like, I'm comfortable.
We're just trying to follow guidelines that, that are put out.
The county guidelines, but the state, I mean, there's no official document saying 10 people. It's just like, it's just a recommendation.
Right, from the, that's, that's also coming from the county. 10 people indoors, 25 people outdoors and so on and so forth.
Doctor Dunn, what's up?
But Joelle, can we, just in the survey, can we say, do you want to choose this? Or do you want to choose this and then have room for specific comments? So that every parent can, can give some, some specific feedback?
Yeah, you could definitely leave questions or comments and questions, that's no problem.
That might be great. That would eliminate having to come into the gym or something. I mean, if they had a list of comments.
I still think we ought to give them the opportunity for, for a short time, a half hour. Meet at 6 o'clock in the gym for a public hearing.
Larry, but bottom line is, people won't feel comfortable coming to a large mass gathering.
And that's fine, they don't, they choose not to, that's fine, but give them the option.
But you're, you're creating a bias, you're creating a bias for people who feel comfortable versus people who don't feel comfortable, so now you don't get a, a, a subsection of the entire community. You just have half the people come. Don't you think, don't you think the survey is more fair?
It is.
Why couldn't they put together an email or a note to Nate or Mitch or, or somebody?
They can call, they can call every one of us, every one of our numbers is public and so is our emails, so.
It's kind of biased, it really is kind of biased, even the people that want to speak up.
All right, we've given, we've given Mitch guidance, so let's, uh, let's move on. That was a good discussion. Let's go to items for action.
Can I, can I get my question answered? Are we going to allow people a public hearing next Monday night? Whether it's here or, you know, in the gym or outside in the parking lot, I don't care. To voice their opinion, Nate?
Um, well, I think, like I said Larry, I think with, if we leave the open comments on the poll, which we want everybody to take, then we can read through those. They can call you, they can call me, they can, they could actually join in, join in on the Zoom meeting.
So every, every one of our meetings starts with an opportunity for public comment, right? So if we make this a posted meeting.
Or Monday.
Or Monday, and if we could meet in the gym, for those of us who wanted to be present, that if there were people who wanted to make public comment during the meeting, they could.
So that would be a person.
And we'll still have the Zoom, so if there are people who want to make public comment. We have people tonight joining us who could make public comment.
Can I, can I interject about the gym though?
Oh, yes.
The, the gym has, is scheduled right now. Monday night, sir, is a group that uses it of the athletes that you guys allowed to use the gymnasium for the summer. But Monday night, there are kids in it.
For the school board, Matt, we'll just take it over.
All right, I mean, you gotta do what you gotta do, I'm just letting you know.
No, I'm joking. We'll comment, we'll.
Are you saying it's a youth group or, or something, Matt?
No, it's a high school group.
Well, I think we could work around that, Matt.
I'm just letting you know, I just wanted you to be aware that it's scheduled as far as I know.
I like your idea, Joey, as far as, you know, hey, there's a public comment section. They're more than welcome to come in and talk to us or if we have to set up that. Hopefully, hey, can we set it somehow to notify us ahead of time? If they, if they want to make a comment, that way we know we're not sitting outside and nobody shows up to make this public comment.
We could, in the survey, we could say email. If you wish to speak to this in person on Monday night, we can, we could talk about a time.
Yep.
And we could just say email.
You would, yeah, that way we know, you know, hey, if nobody's going to show up, everybody's. And that way we can accommodate where we're going to be.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, awesome, okay.
Well, what, can you?
I, well, I've got a question, so if people haven't signed up in advance, are they going to be turned away at the door?
No, it's just that we want to, if we're going to be, well, we can't be in the gym, but if we're going to be in what size of a room, if we have 20 people come to talk, we kind of want a heads up as opposed to.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. That's what my concern is, is that I, I don't know how many people would show up, but I don't want anybody to be put in an unsafe situation, nor do I want anybody to be turned away at the door. So I just didn't know what the plan was.
Is it possible for the public to speak right now?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, this is Mo Grim. You are aware there are cases of COVID in Mineral Point. I'm, I'm sure you're aware of that. And this proposal opens our community up into, to community spread in a way that is dangerous. And someone just recently mentioned that you are actually opening yourself up to bias because there are many people who would not possibly attend something like this. And those that would are clearly biased in, in their feelings on the subject. You have to find a better option.
Um, that's the option of, of emailing on the questionnaire that we referenced and.
I'm talking about this, this idea of having some gathering where people come and talk to the board.
That's.
It will be done by Zoom and we will have people who.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood that, thank you for clarifying.
At least that was my, was that?
Yes, a Zoom meeting, that they could definitely talk on the Zoom meeting. They could come in person if they'd rather. They could leave comments in the comment section or they can call any of those persons.
And the coming in person is the thing that concerns me. Those that come in person, everybody at risk.
The gym is being used for athletic activities already. I don't understand why that would be a problem.
Well, because the people.
I mean, you got, we got.
We're, we're being a little hypocritical as a, as a community. But, but people are opting in to participating in those activities. But when it comes to your education, one way or another, we need to get kids educated. They can't, they can't choose to opt in or out of education. We can opt them in or out of being in school or virtual, but it's not like, well, you can just choose not to play basketball. You don't get to choose not to do fourth grade. You're going to do fourth grade whether you're there.
Is there any more, uh, we're, I'm ready to move on unless anybody else has anything else. Okay, now we're going to go to approval of purchases in excess of $5,000.
You have two, there's one listed here for math expressions. It's the math program at the elementary school. The price tag for that is $10,317. The other item that did get attached are the Swivel, S-W-I-V-L, Swivel cameras. And the price tag is $6,348.
The Common Core was in the budget?
Yes.
For the math expression thing?
Yes, the math expressions is in, it, it's there. Mr. Enwick, if you care to respond, it is part of your curriculum that is done every year.
Yep, and we thought, at first we were thinking maybe we don't go with the handbook, the workbooks, but we thought, just feedback from parents was they appreciated having some physical materials at home or in school, but especially at home. Just, just a couple of, the studies are being summarized, that just anything in print text is very helpful too, instead of always reading on a screen, I think will be beneficial. So we would like to move forward on that.
The math is part of the budget, the, the Swivel would be above and beyond. And, and yes, it would be something we could put into our FEMA equipment reimbursement. So potentially get about 87%, 87 and a half percent of that.
I'll make a motion, we approve both purchases.
I've got a, I'll, I just got a question.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We'll have a discussion, okay?
Matt, this question's for you, real brief. If we moved more towards virtual learning, live telepresence, is there a better curriculum than others to purchase? Or do you think it's all the same? That's my question.
I think the, the factor is, is the quality of the teacher. And the, the teacher's going to find the best curriculum resources for those kids. And that's just, makes me very thankful to be in Mineral Point. We just have some, just high-quality staff, so.
Is this, I don't know, the 6,000, is that enough Swivel machines to get the job done? That would be a. That will cover the elementary one per grade level. We would be looking at an additional purchase if that's something that the middle school, high school is just to pursue, then we'd be coming back with an additional purchase. My question is, if there's possibly federal money for it, wouldn't that be wise for us to possibly pursue it now? We, we have not, we have not submitted our equipment, okay, claim to the, to FEMA yet. All right, so there is time for us to still get additional pieces of equipment and to turn that on receipt as well. And support this, all right?
If I can just add, when I talked to the rep for Swivel, they said it's about a six to eight, six to eight week from when you make the order to when they arrive, so just something to be aware of.
So that would maybe, might not happen in time, yeah.
Look, we've still had the Zoom option.
Right.
This just makes it better with sensory data and different kids.
And then if we, if we like it, I'll jump on. Uh, any other discussion? All right, Andrew, call a question, question please.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
All right, uh, next is approval of summer school contracts.
In your package should be a list of summer school staff. We have some, summer school that is starting now at this, and, and some of our extended year information.
Bring that up Mitch, that was just added today, so it's not in your package, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't see it.
You don't, it's not in their package?
No, they don't have that, that's what I told you, we just added that spreadsheet today. So if you just double-click on that.
On summer school?
The attachment, yep.
Sure, I don't have.
It's not attached either.
I don't have an attachment here.
Uh, can we jump to the next one then for now?
Sure.
Sure, we can move on to. Let's move on to the approval of the handbooks.
First up would be the Middle Point Elementary. Mr. Enwick, are there any major changes or editorial revisions that you want to point out for the board?
Nothing major, other than we, I removed the attendance award. Obviously, we didn't give it this past year and I don't foresee us giving it this coming year. And certainly don't want to encourage kids to come to school, especially now because they're not feeling well, you know, to win some kind of an attendance award. So I just didn't feel it was appropriate, given the current context. But beyond that, no, no big changes.
Uh, we can, let's zoom individually. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move that we approve the elementary parents' student handbook.
I will second that.
Well, Danji's not here.
I can, I can run it through.
Okay.
If you have any discussion.
Uh, we have any discussion on that, the handbook, questions?
On the elementary one.
On the elementary, correct.
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll call a question, Mitch?
Okay, Lindsay?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Dunn?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Steffus?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
All right, next, uh, we'll move on to the middle school.
No, no changes here. Just moved some things around so it would flow a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. Entertained a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the middle school.
Okay, period. Anybody second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Hey, Doc, busy?
Yep.
Any, any discussion? All right, we'll call a question on that one.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
That's true. Everybody said that.
And we'll go to the next, high school.
Middle school handbook.
What? The next handbook, yes.
Yeah, high school athletic handbook.
I can't see that far yet. Don't worry.
It says high school athletic handbook.
I think that's the one that has the thing about prom and.
That's the one that you want clarification on?
Right, yeah. That's the one where we gotta, I, I think Larry's got a good point. I think it should be studied again and reevaluated how that is done.
Yeah, we gotta go middle school, middle school handbook first.
Okay.
In the middle school handbook, it pretty much the same. We moved some things around so it flowed better. Matt, I don't have my notes in front of me, but we made the numbers on discipline.
Yeah, we just, we changed a couple of things around in the, uh, oh, what do I want to call it here? The discipline policies and procedures, that handbook that we approved last year. We just changed some things and cleaned some things up after a year of obviously using that, uh, which I thought was a very beneficial thing to have this past year. So just cleaned some things up, nothing major though.
I think the other thing that was added was a better description of directory information or directory data. So if, if somebody, an outside organization calls them requesting information, we've tried to do a better job of defining what our general directory information is, what information we would share with outside organizations on our students. Cleanse it up for both our, our families so they know and any outside organization.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion for the, I know we didn't do a motion for that one, I did, middle school handbook.
I make a motion to approve the middle.
Okay, middle school handbook, Larry does, any second?
I'll second.
Andy, any discussion on middle school handbook? Andy, call a question please?
Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
All right, now we will move on to the high school athletic handbook.
And is this the one that.
Like this to homecoming? Yeah, make a motion to table this and the employee handbook. I think there's some questions on PTO and stuff like that we need to address once we determine what route of.
Okay, and the employee handbook?
I'd like to table book, I, I think we've got to provide answers for how we're going to treat.
Can we discuss the employee handbook in post session?
Well, can I, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear that Andy.
I was, I was making a motion to table both the high school athletic handbook due to the homecoming concerns and the employee handbook because I've got questions about PTO, once we figure out. questions about PTO, once we figure out what route we're going to go that probably are not listed.
Okay, okay, I, I just couldn't hear what you said.
I second the motion to table it.
I would like to move, I would, I would like to be able to discuss the employee handbook in closed session, if that's possible.
You're adding that to the motion?
Can you say we're gonna add the motion, are you adding that to?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll make an amendment to that, Dr. Lindsay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other terms on that?
No.
Alright, we'll call the question to table those. Angie? One question, please?
And we're tabling.
Tabling employee.
Handbook.
And activity, athletic activity.
But, but you also have Larry's addition to that motion to discuss it in closed session.
Employee handbook is going to close session.
Yeah, just the employee handbook.
Okay.
Angie?
So we'll do the high school athletic handbook first. Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
And then the employee handbook table and discuss in closed session.
Dr. Dunn's got a question.
Dr. Dunn?
Do we need to make a motion to request that the, back to Larry's question, concern about homecoming? Do we need to make a motion that that be sent to the homecoming committee for review to report back to the board at the August board meeting? Or is that just a directive to the superintendent to make happen that we already discussed?
Good point.
Part of your question, we should act on it in August for sure, because we've got to get it done before school starts. Is there, what, what committee would that fall under, our four standing committees?
It would, well, there's two homecoming advisors and then our homecoming committee, which is usually the group of seniors.
Policy, okay, could we have a policy committee? Who's the chair of policy?
That's Everett.
I, but I don't think this comes under policy.
No.
It, it, you know, if there's nothing in there about homecoming and policy.
Person, are you personaling?
I'm a co-chair, personalizing.
Call personnel committee then sometime.
I, I understand the need for some board input or the desire for board input, but, but I would come back that this is not necessarily board policy, which the policy committee would, would need to discuss. This does carry the weight of a policy because it gets your approval, but we could try to set up a meeting and invite a couple of school board members to that meeting.
There you go, do that.
And I think that's probably the better route to go.
And take minutes of that, of that little meeting then.
Yep. Okay. Okay.
So now we're going to vote on, again, the employee handbook, table that and discuss in closed session.
Correct.
Okay, Bush?
I just need to be clear, well, I mean, what's the closing round?
Uh, just, just to pertain to the subject in closed session.
I'm sorry, should that be, is that a motion that Larry amended, so should that be, you originally made the motion that Larry amended it?
Yeah, Larry did amend it, and questions were closed sessioning.
Sorry.
I mean, I got, I just want some clarification on the employee handbook. And, and there may be staff members' names that I, I don't want to, without.
Yes.
Their consent.
Then yes.
That's all.
Yeah, I just need to, I mean.
Got it.
But I'm not going to start with you since it's amended by Larry, so I'm going to start with Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Clarification, Mitch, you're, you will be scheduling a meeting around the homecoming piece?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the homecoming committee together, and then I will find dates, and then try to get that out to the school board, to see if we can get a couple members.
Thanks, Mitch.
Alright, next is the, I can't see quite that far, it's the parent-student handbook, I believe?
High school.
High school handbook, yep.
Yep, I have one question on that one. How, how come an A+ is, is given a point of 4.0 and an A is a 4.0? How come there's no differentiation between an A+ and an A?
I can speak to that. This is a conversation we had several years ago, in that, that an A+ used to garner a 4.33, but no colleges accept anything above a 4.0. So we would have to adjust our grade point averages all back to a 4.0 scale to report GPAs out to colleges and universities that our students were attending.
Well, I, Mitch, one, one comment I have about that is, so, of course, I'm educated a long time ago, they used to be able to give you an A with distinction or an A with honors, which would make it different than just, I mean, is there additional wording added to some kids that, let's say, just do super on something?
We, we do not add any other.
Okay.
Positions of distinction on, on the grades as they sit right now.
Oh.
We, we still have the 4.33 internally, which helps us as a tiebreaker. We had to use it the last two years for sure, in determining the valuary and, and then we recognize everybody else as a salutatorian, then we use that same criteria to determine who will give the salutatorian speech at the graduation ceremony.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious, thanks.
You're welcome.
Matt, does this have the 210 plan in it?
It does, and we actually, we added something to that, that is on page.
I'm just curious, without knowing the lay of the land at that time, if we want. Passing.
Um.
The policy that really promotes kids coming to school with the sniffles.
Sure, uh, you know, I guess this last spring, we, you know, we kind of took that out of there. We, we said, you know, we're rolling them back, obviously, if we were able to come back, um, and we would make some adjustments to that. I wouldn't suggest that you take that out, I think it's got some good merits to it. And, uh, and we don't know what type of situation we'll be in in the spring at that point. Um, we did add something to that too. Last year, we started, during RTI, we started an enrichment program. Um, and we asked that kids grades nine through 11th get free enrichment activities. So that language is in there now as well. Um, so it actually adds to that and kind of defines, you know, what it is with final exams and stuff. Uh, but I think that's something that we can amend at any point during the school year as well.
You believe that, once we pass it, if we're, if we're in school every day the whole year, we won't run into issues if we try and remove it in the third quarter.
I think that we can make that amendment at any point. I don't think we'll run into any issues. I appreciate that insight though.
That's a good idea, make it part of the.
And I think if you decide to leave it in, it's certainly something that we could come back and review.
You can review.
Based on health, you know.
Yeah.
Get into the third, nine weeks if we're actually blessed with a vaccine and, and, you know, school back, and we could really talk about it at that time, prior to fourth quarter.
Uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
Well, if it's not an emotion, if, Angie would just put that in the minutes? That, that we talked about, if we're still at their partial homeschool.
And.
210 final.
And I think it's something that obviously at that point, we would, I would bring back and visit with you anyways, uh, depending on where we're at with that situation, so.
Perfect.
Alright, would anybody like to?
I'll make the motion, that'll be.
Okay. Andy, anybody second, I'll second that. Jerry? Any more discussion?
A clarification on the valuary and salutatorian, one more time, Matt or Mitch?
Yep.
4.0, you, you will accept all 4.0s as salutarians?
Yep.
Yeah.
And all are recognized as such.
And I, I like that, that policy, I think that's good.
I, I think we, we talked about that, it's, it's tough to punish a kid for a 4.0 GPA. And to say, well, you don't get to be recognized, if we determine the valuary and the tiebreaker, everybody else gets awarded, gets recognized and awarded as such as a salutatorian.
Right.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Angie, we call a question, please?
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Alright.
And safety booklet.
Safety booklet, the only updates are names, so it's kind of, at the beginning of the safety booklet, it starts out kind of as a, like a calling tree or an order, a triage order, so to speak. If this happens, this person's in charge, this person's in charge of this area, if they're not in place, there is a second to do it. If we need to call people, that, that phone list is there. Uh, the only other thing added to that is basically, at the end, a great deal of information around COVID-19. Stay at home when appropriate, you know, symptoms, things that we'll be doing, cleaning and disinfecting, and those kinds of things, is the major add to that safety based on our current health. Otherwise, everything else remains as is.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I will.
Hey, Gary? Anybody second?
I'll second.
Larry? Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Mitch, I'm assuming that this handbook can be updated as the COVID-19 situation evolves through the year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we don't have to wait till next summer to approve changes to the handbook, correct?
When it comes to COVID-19, there'll probably be a change between tonight and tomorrow, so yes, you are right, we would not wait.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Alright, Andy, call a question.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
We'll go back up, I've got it on here now.
Okay, we'll go back up to summer school contracts.
Can I give my copy of that? It was double-sided.
Nope, so what you see before you are the rates, the hours of instruction and instructors for this summer school. Some summer school has already started. We have some students in our building, one-on-one with social distancing. Uh, we are using safety precautions for anybody that is coming in the building. Uh, others are either outside of the building and/or will be virtual. But this is pretty standard for us, and this will, this is, we're just asking you to approve these contracts for our summer school staff.
One simple question, Mitch. The hours that these individuals have listed, they will be onsite for that many hours?
Virtual?
No.
Some of them might be teaching virtual.
Right.
Because the students will be virtual, a lot of the summer school will be virtual. Mr. Feedler, Mr. Leonard, Mr. Paul Scale, I know are onsite. Uh, other, a lot of the other elementary positions will be done, the classes will be done virtual.
Okay, alright.
This is substantially less than what we've done in the last.
Yeah. I believe that.
Good, good point, okay. And will we get credit, reimbursement from the state for these hours then, handling it this way?
Whatever summer school we're offering, we, we put into the formula, and because it's less, our reimbursement will be correct, much less it's on a three-year rolling average, and so there'll be a dip in the number of students who are able to claim for summer school enrollment.
Which is based on enrollment.
Okay, it's like 48,000 minutes of instruction or hours of instruction equals one full-time student?
I'm just curious, did you mention how many kids this is servicing?
Um, I do not have that information, I believe Jane Barr has a.
Matt might know.
Matt, do you have a roster for summer school?
Uh, Jane has the full roster, I just have one of them, but Jane has the full one, I can ever provide it.
Any idea, Matt, approximate numbers compared?
Yeah, just for a couple of classes, um, we're looking at anywhere from nine to 11, 12 kids per class. Around there, virtual. Uh, just, that's just for the elementary classes, I cannot say for the second. I know Mr. Miles had probably doubled that, because he was doing the entire, you know, middle school. So, um, I think he was around 18 or 20.
The conditioning courses, they, they must be well-received, aren't they, up here?
They are, and they're only high school this year, only high school, okay, due to the virus. So, yeah, we will be down, we will be down quite a bit this year for summer school enrollment.
For the last individual, Mitch, was some of that done in June, that the rate is different?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, would anybody like to make a motion to, to approve the summer school contracts?
I'll make a motion to approve the summer school contracts.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Andy, any more discussion? No, alright, Angie, call a question, please?
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
I think that was everything on that one.
Yes.
Okay, uh, next we'll go to the approval of academic standards and report card distinction.
So, we are recommending approving basically the state-mandated reports. This is our list of academic notice, courses that we offer. This is the same as last year. The big issue are accountability, the school report card, there was, there was no report card being issued for this year. They had waived the state exam. In one of my last conversations, and I've got another one tomorrow, I don't know if I'll give any more information tomorrow. At present time, they're planning on holding the exams next spring, but, but that's subject to change based on the health of, of the state and the students. And the state is also looking at changing the format slightly on the report card, so I don't know what that will look like. But, but we will adopt the state report card as it is and use that data for ourselves moving forward. And that's basically what we're trying to put into the, our academic standards and, and report card distinction, based on what the state lays out moving forward. So we just need simple approval, these are the same standards that we have been living with for several successful years.
Alright, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this school accountability report.
I'll second that.
Gary, second, any discussion?
Well, certainly Mitch, you are under the impression that there will be exams for semester-end exams. Somehow.
Yes.
I mean, we're entering into the year with that.
Right, our local assessments will be in place, and right now, based on what the state is telling me, we're, our plan is to, to give the forward exam, the ACT exam as is, unless we hear different. Because the forward exam was what was suspended last year.
Because there are, there are some juniors that are going to need, ACT is junior, right?
Correct.
I mean, they're, a year from now, they're going to look at colleges, so, again, we, we need to move on.
And that, somehow, that will be our approach, yes, sure.
Any discussion? Angie?
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Wasby Business Honorable.
Joel, would you like to speak to this? Joel, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, I hope all of you got my email, I think it was two weeks ago maybe when I sent it. Um, it's that time of year where the Wisconsin Association of School Boards is opening up and asking all school districts in the state to give recognition to businesses who have supported our district in, in any way, shape or form that you feel is worthy of recognition. So I sent the list of businesses that we have recognized in the past and you can do anywhere from one to five per year. And um, you can't repeat a business, I know that's a question that often comes up as well. So if one has been recognized before, then we can't recognize them again. But it's just a nice way to say thanks, it's good publicity for the business as well as what they've done for the school and it's statewide recognition that, you know, it's, it's hard to turn down. So I'd be interested in, in hearing your thoughts.
Have we ever nominated a, a business out of the area, Joel?
Um, we've certainly done regional businesses, you know, Dodgeville, um, the SSM Health, I believe the lady came from Madison for that recognition, uh, Plattville, so any, anybody who's done something for the school, I, I don't think there's a geographic limitation.
I think uh, HSR is certain helped us out in that remodel debacle at Kerkey, I guess. And uh, that, that was one that came to mind. But I don't want to, I don't want to nominate a, out of the area business if we have five local businesses.
How about Ann Gorgon Photography, she did the, I know we, we paid for it, or I think actually the parents paid for it, but
Correct.
Those nine banners on Main Street, and I, she must have turned them really quick because stuff was happening pretty fast.
Have we done Alliant before, Joel?
I don't think that was on this.
I don't think I'd nominate them with their time and trucks that they donated to put the signs up.
Do we do, do we two, two or three last year?
Between one and five.
Well, what did we do last year? We didn't do, was it three? Three.
Anything stand out Mitch, uh, business, I mean?
I'm just, I'm, I'm in the same boat, I'm just trying to think. Um, we've had places do work for us, but have been more regional that we have, that we have recognized. Dr. Dunn or Mr. Austin?
Uh, one other, the last couple of years, Vortex has allowed our seniors to come up and tour, Epic has allowed our seniors to come up and tour. Uh, this last year, Channel, I think it was twenty-seven, allowed us to come up and tour that day with the seniors. Um, so those, those are some other options for you too.
Vortex is a wonderful, wonderful addition to this list.
Um, there, there's a new scoreboard at the baseball diamond and there's a business name on it and I can't tell you who it is. Did they?
Baby Electric? I don't, I don't know.
Ms. Dahl, are you still on?
Yes.
Is there a business signage on the baseball scoreboard?
Um, yes, there's uh, Ivy Construction and they've donated to uh, New Year's ago to our basketball scoreboards also. Um, Mount City Bank, Farmer Savings Bank and Hoffman Electric on the baseball.
And has Ivies been recognized, Angie?
No.
Ivies has not?
Oh geez.
Not on my list.
Well, then I'll make a motion to nominate Ivies.
I would say as much of it.
They, yeah, they've done some other things for us, so I, I would agree with that.
I agree with that too.
I thought, but I figured they'd nominate.
Joel, I don't see them on my list.
No, I don't, I, so, either.
So you would go with Ann Gorgon, Alliant and Ivies?
Yeah.
I have, I have, I have more than that on the list that was named off, so HSR was first one. Then Ann Gorgon Photography, Alliant, then Matt, uh, Austin named the three tours, so Vortex, Epic and Channel Twenty-Seven. And then Ivy Construction, I think was the last one, so.
Okay, let's stick with like four, yeah. Do we do H, let's wait till HSR finishes the job then we'll see whether or not.
Perfect. So Alliant, Vortex, Epic and Ivy? Yeah. Right, I like that list.
Took Ann Gorgon off.
Oh shoot, I did.
I would put.
You say Epic, you have, you have, you say Gorgon, Alliant, Ivy and Vortex.
Yes.
Gary? Everybody in agree?
Want to make that motion to nominate?
Yeah, I will make that motion. Gary, motion? Anybody second?
I'll second.
Twenty seconds, any concerns, questions, comments?
I do got a, I just got a question for you, Matt. When, when our kids tour these places like Vortex?
Yeah.
Kind of a thank you do we give to the, a place like that, or what kind of relationship do we have with Vortex?
Uh, a pretty good one, actually, they, they are very uh, very easy to work with and even Epic, I mean, they've, they've been very nice that way. We usually send thank yous and that stuff to them after the fact. Um, but it's a fantastic opportunity for our kids, if you've talked to any kid that got to go on it. You know, it's really eye-opening on the, the different things that they could possibly do uh, with different degrees, you know. Vortex, you can have a multitude of different work experience and stuff and you can go work there. Or Epic, you can be, you know, you can be a computer programmer, you could be a chef, you could, there's plenty of things to do. And uh, the new station one, this one, this was new this year, but they really like that one too. It was really cool to see from what I got back from kids, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second, let's call the question on that.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers, could be Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppus?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Uh, budget amendments.
Um, tomorrow, the next two days will be our audit by Johnson and Block. And these, these budget amendments that you see before you, again, it's the same dollar amount. It's accounts that we would have budgeted for that, for various reasons, we didn't end up spending the money in those accounts, but we needed to move them to cover expenses and other accounts. So it's money we had in the budget. I'll just say for new equipment, but because we ran school year short, we didn't need the new equipment, but we needed the, that budget money, the new location, and it requires a budget amendment for Marsh to move that in there. And, and that will suffice for the auditors as well, that will be, like I said, will be here the next few days. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve this.
Okay, uh, we'll go Doc and then Gary, uh, Larry? Any discussion? Nope, all right, Angie?
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Mitch, along those lines, will we need to meet the warm on the end to approve? Any potential Fund Forty-Six transfer?
Yes, we would need to. And we'll know that.
We won't, we won't have it by Monday?
Will we have it by Monday? I doubt it, I, I can ask.
So, maybe the following.
I can ask uh, Johnson Block.
Yeah, if we're, but go on and let me see, maybe we need more than once this week again.
Right, right. See what I can get from them, I guess, in the next two days. All right, we'll move on to uh, approval of retirements. We have one retirement, our school nurse, Julie Tompkins, came to me uh, a multitude of reasons. One of them, she has older parents that live in Las Vegas and as they get up in age, require more support, they're not, they're not needing, you know, retirement care, you know, in-home care, anything like that, but, but she just feels the need to be closer to her parents in order to help out as much as she can. Been a rather lengthy conversation and uh, she has tendered her retirement and um, has been able to locate some employment close to that area where she could still check in on parents and take care of her. She's been a very wonderful employee, a very valued employee. She's been a great asset to the district and will be missed. And I would ask that you accept her retirement and in that also, that we post a position of a school nurse. If we ever need a school nurse. This is certainly the time we would need a school nurse as well, so I would ask that we, all right, we can post that position tomorrow as well. Anybody like to make the motion to approve the retirement and to post the listing? Oh, sorry, what, what's up?
Well, I can make the motion and put it in discussion if you want.
Okay. Doc Dunn put a motion, any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Gary, now we can have a discussion?
Uh, so the letter says, "I am requesting there be no fees or fines imposed due to this late notice." Mitch, can you talk about what fines, penalties she's referring to and whether we need to approve that or not?
In the, in um, their contracts, uh, retiring at the time that she turned in her letter, there is a $150 penalty fee. Uh, and she tendered her resi, her retirement letter at the end of June, but was willing to stay on and work with us through the month of July. So I would recommend that, that her time that she's working with us in July compensates for the uh, fee that was, has been imposed by the district in the past.
So she's not getting paid for the month of July?
She is not being paid for the month of July, uh, and, and would accept that, in essence, that covers the fee that uh, that she would be charged.
Okay, um, another question about posting the position. Um, I've had concerns for several weeks now that these precautions that we're going to be putting in place for this school year is going to be a strain on a school nurse. And I don't know where to begin, but it starts with um, hand sanitizing and mask requirements. It starts with tracking kids, um, identifying, you know, tracking all uh, symptom screening before school starts. Finding sick kids and putting them in isolation, separating them from other kids. You know, protecting themselves and staff. This is a tough job and uh, I think if we're to consider to temporarily hire additional nursing staff for this year only, um, I think this board should strongly consider it unless um, unless the administration feels like, you know, the rest of the staff can step up and, and fill those roles and help, you know, communicate with the health department on sorting through what could be a potential mess this year.
What question for you, Dr. Dunn? Should the board decide to do that and hire extra uh, nursing or whatnot and the state shuts us down? Then, then what, then we're paying that extra employees for nothing or?
Right, I, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I, I mean, I, I guess I'm not proposing it as an idea, but I just want everyone to just kind of think about it because I think whatever a school nurse's typical duties would be for a given school year, they're probably going to be uh, at least increased by at least fifty percent this year and um, I don't know what our chances of hiring any nurse at this time, you know, this close to the new school year. So just, just something to think about, I just wanted to get the administration's opinion uh, on that since we're talking about posting a position.
I was hopeful that you were going to say you would uh, be very interested in working for that school district and be our in-school health care provider. Mr. Lindsay's not doing nothing.
That's right.
Thanks for volunteering me, Gary.
Any more discussion?
Do we need someone at the elementary?
And I, if I can, I was just, this is Angie, I was just gonna um, say, because I, uh, nursing falls under pupil services, so I kind of oversee it. Right now, the way it's set up, at least this last year, um, Julie was in the elementary building every morning until after the lunch hour and lunch recess, so she usually left about twelve-thirty and then went up to the high school for the afternoon. So no building has a nurse for the whole day and if you're talking about needing to screen kids, um, you know, it's going to fall on our secretarial staff, office staff to have to do that on top of their others, so it might be worth a consideration to talk about, is this the time for this year that we really do need somebody with nurse background in both buildings? Um, at all times because you, you know, you can't just leave a building empty and not have somebody there to help cover the COVID things in the afternoon or in the morning, so. Um, I was just gonna, wanted to take the time to explain kind of how her day was split last year.
To address Gary's concern, which is reasonable, is it possible to do a, I know we're all, or many staff are on one-year contracts, but I mean, um, what are your thoughts on that or, or looking at kind of like a, a third party? At least for maybe to support a nurse, if we hired a nurse, because we're going to need a nurse. But what if you were able to work with, now it's a group or hire someone temporarily, um, until this is over?
Doc Dunn?
Uh, what about using nursing students to supplement a, a full-time school nurse? Have we talked to Southwest Tech or Edgewood or any places that want to give uh, nursing students some uh, pretty unique?
Aaron, actually, there's, there's a category called graduate nurse who hasn't been licensed yet, you know, the GNs that, they're the gals that have finished or guys, and they're graduate nurses, but they're not uh, licensed yet. There's a, used to be a pool of them, I don't know.
And I know Julie had, usually had a couple nursing students to you, but I don't know what their requirements are about, what they can do independently, you know, of her, if she's in a different building or, you know, those types of kind of tricky requirements.
You have served as a, as a preceptor, so kind of like a, a student teacher, it's a student nurse that comes out and gets hours in the school. And I have had conversations with UW Madison, who is looking, they're looking to place individuals uh, and I can reach out and see if there is somebody that would be more qualified. I, I, this is, I, I don't know if this is worse or not as bad, but this is, it's like losing a teacher at this time of year and trying to find a quality replacement. I, I, again, I'm, I'm very concerned, but uh, we need to do the best we can. And, and if we could get more than one candidate, more than one viable candidate for the position, I think maybe I would certainly come back and talk to the board about possibilities of expanding the nurse's role for a year. But if, if we're going to land anybody, we need to get it out as soon as we possibly can.
I think we vote on posting the one position right now and once we have a better idea of what the landscape's going to look like. I mean, if we're only anticipating forty students in high school, because that's how it ends up, then having multiple people doesn't seem.
Right.
I think we need to know how many students we're going to have.
Plus, we'll have the applicants from um, this posting we can go back to. And do we, do you need an RN nurse, uh, Mitch, in the building or what, what is the requirement?
I don't know.
LPM would be okay, a licensed medical nurse.
I don't know that it has to be an RN. Had my daughter not taken a, a new travel assignment, I just bought off of her, a, a position as a school nurse. No, uh, you know, someone in the healthcare field.
I got it. Go ahead, Aaron, I, I got, several of the high school kids have taken LPM training this summer and um, that's another resource for you guys, I mean, just uh, I, I know that uh, one of my grandsons has taken it in addition to some of his other classmates.
Doc Dunn?
Uh, I agree with Mitch, with Andy's suggestion, just post the full-time position and see what we get. But that point should be recognized that, now that I think about it, I mean, if we do adopt the hybrid model where you've got kids at home and kids at school, that does limit the amount of volume of kids that are coming through doors every morning and it does limit the number of kids that need to be screened. And that would make the job a little more doable as opposed to, say, if we had ninety percent of kids coming back, you know, all at once. But I, I agree with seeing where, what the pool is like, Mitch, and then maybe having a quick turnaround time to revisit that, I don't know if you want to give it two weeks after a posting or what you would recommend?
Yeah, I would, I would try to put the posting out there for two weeks and hopefully we get some interest. Knowing with, with your recommendation posted, I've got people at the ready to make some phone calls tomorrow to say, hey, we've got a school nurse position open, would you be interested? So um, I would never poach another employee, but I have no problem if my employees try to poach another employee somewhere. All right, well, we have a, we have a motion and a second, um, any more discussion on?
Any more discussion on the school nurse?
Just a clarification on the $750 penalty. So at the end of June, she knew she was retiring, but she worked through July, and that's offsetting the $750 penalty?
Yes, the time that she's putting in would be more than the $750, and she's just willing, if, if that, if that covers that penalty?
The only, just the only thing I would say is I've, I know we had a couple of issues last year with people retiring and wanting something, you know, and I just, I think this is a slippery slope. I think you know what I'm, what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I do. Okay, well, Angie, we'll call a question, please?
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Sappas?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
And on the business services, okay? The approval of the bill is tabled. We can sum them together if we want to.
Just sum them together.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion to approve bills and credit card statement?
I will do that.
Okay, Gary make a motion, anybody second?
I'll second that.
Gary second? Anybody have any questions on anything? No, okay, Angie?
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Sappas?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
All right.
I got one more, um, comment on reopening the schools, Mitch. Our, our PPE, how are we sitting there with masks, sanitizer, sanitizing stations? I mean, is that all in the queue? Are we going to be good there regardless if we have 100 kids in the building or 300?
Our, our plan moving forward is to not equip every student every day with a mask, okay? Uh, that would be financially impossible for us to do. The county has, uh, emergency management has, uh, received an allocation of 125,000 masks. So that is several thousand for school district. Uh, and that was the intention of why Iowa County manage, Emergency Management did that. The DBI is sending us out, um, at least two masks per pupil and staff member. And that supply should be coming within the next two weeks. Roger has been purchasing masks and sanitizers. The spray bottle, expect that we have the equipment, the chemicals to mix up a CDC recommended disinfectant for this virus. We have plenty of that, we just need the, the spray bottles. We have two now, uh, cleaners, I'll, I'll call them foggers for lack of a better term, that electrostatically charge the cleaning particles as they come out, so they cling to things a- as they're cleaning.
Okay.
We have purchased and are awaiting the arrival of an ultraviolet light cleaner, something that you'll be able to put in the center of a room, start it in 15 minutes, the ultraviolet light will have disinfected the room. We're trying to purchase another one of those. The one we're getting, we purchased in, uh, collaboration with the wrestling club to help sanitize a wrestling room. We've gone 50/50 on that. So we, we are trying to stay ahead of the supply. CISA 3 has a place to purchase more PPEs. And Iowa County Emergency Management, we can order things through them as well. So we are, we are ordering and hopefully receiving. And, you know, everybody's in the same boat, but, you know, masks that were once 20 cents a piece are now $2 a times, you know, so.
The sanitizing, um, dispensers, I see a couple wanting here. Do we have them located? I mean, we have portable ones, we can move around.
We did, we do not have any portable ones now. I've been in conversations with Roger about getting a few of those. You know, even on, uh, because you're coming in the building, having one stationed there. But yet, yes, we have multiple ones that we can mount. We have some more that we can mount if we feel there's a location that we really need one. But yes, I have been in conversations about ordering some of those portable ones that just kind of a standalone.
Will, will masks, I think, I'm thinking cloth masks would be added to in the back to school supplies if, uh, the gore outworkings are physically present in the building? Or is paper the way to go, or disposable the way to go?
Well, cloth is the recommended, so that you can take them home and, and rewash them. I have had a, uh, an individual in the community reach out to me and say, I've got several ladies ready to start sewing if need be. So I will be reaching out to them saying, sew away, tell me what you need. You know, do you want me to buy the material? And you'll put the masks together. But we will be reaching every corner and, and point that we can for whatever support is needed.
All right, good. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion, go into closed session?
I'm in motion, I'm going to probably second.
Hey, Larry?
I think we probably want a two-minute break.
Yeah, anybody second, anybody want a second? Y'all in favor?
We got to.
Oh, come on, okay, all right, let's hold on then.
Sappas?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes, all right, we'll take a two-minute recess.
The two doctors, I will send a new Zoom invite to you.
Okay, I'll leave the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.